We're live. Good morning, everyone. All right, I'm going to call this meeting of the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency's Advisory Planning Commission to order. It is Wednesday, June 14, 2023. I've got 9:33 a.m. And the first item on the agenda is the roll call to determine a quorum. Over to you, Tracy.
Mr. Oling?
Present.
Ms. Chandler?
Present.
Mr. Drake?
Present.
Mr. Drew? Ms. Carr?
Present.
Ms. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Letton?
Here, good morning.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Present.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes, here.
Mr. Hill? Ms. Simon?
Here.
Mr. TeShara? Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Ferry?
Here.
Mr. Che, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you, Tracy. Okay, I will now go over the remote meeting rules for the day. For members of the public to observe the meeting, go to trpa.gov under the calendar header, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, Hybrid Meeting for June 14, 2023. And there you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. To address APC members directly with your comments, raise your hand in Zoom by clicking Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen at the appropriate Agenda item. With your hand raised, you'll be unmuted by TRPA staff and have three minutes to address the APC. If you have used the dial-in numbers to join us by telephone, you can dial *9 to raise your hand and you'll be unmuted. To my fellow APC members, if you wish to speak, you can also raise your hand in Zoom. You will find the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Remote APC members may not use the chat box to make any comments or have sidebar conversations. Please, everyone, remember to mute your microphone unless you're speaking, to cut down on background noise. And finally, I would like to ask that all remote members turn on their cameras if they're able. Thank you for that. Onto Item 2, which is approval of our agenda. Staff, any changes to the agenda?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, which is?
Thank you, Mr. Hester. I'll deem the agenda approved as posted for the record. Onto Item 3, which is Public Interest Comments. If any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission at this time, please raise your hand by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing *9 on your phone, and you'll be unmuted by a TRPA staff member. Let's see, all public comments should be as brief as possible. Any unheard comments can be submitted via email to tcampbell@trpa.gov, and they'll be forwarded to all APC members. Please note, the Advisory Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public that are not listed on the agenda. And I will go to the room first for public comment. Any members wish to make a public comment? No one? So Catherine, I'll go to you for Zoom public comments.
Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised to comment at this time.
Thank you, Catherine. Onto Item 4, Disposition of Minutes. We have a draft set of minutes from our April 12, 2023 meeting on page 5 of your packets. Any questions or comments from APC members on the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Steve, go ahead.
Just a couple of minor ones. Again, an outstanding job on the minutes. Very, very good detail. On page, on page, what is 18 of the packet? The third paragraph down, Mr. TeShara thanked Ms. Glickard for her response, but added that, I believe the word should be "he," as he wasn't sure that the word progress is applicable. And then on page, a little farther back in the packet, it's just a misspelling of the word kale, K-A-H-L-E, as in kale drive, not the stuff you have to eat when somebody tells you for dinner. That's, those are my two amendments.
Good catches, Steve. Appreciate your review of that.
Sure.
Other members? Any members on Zoom have comments on the minutes?
Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments, I'll move the approval of the minutes of the April 12 meeting with the two amendments that I made.
Thank you, Steve. Second. Thank you, Garth. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions or no votes on the minutes? Hearing none. I believe we have a majority. We have a unanimous aye vote there. Thank you. All right, onto the meat of our agenda, which is Item 5 in our Planning Matters. Item 5A is an informational briefing. The Tahoe Keys Control Methods Test Project Update. Information can be found on page 29 of your packet. And I'm going to pass this over to Dennis Zabaglo with TRPA to present on this item. Hey, Dennis.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Dennis Zabaglo, Aquatic Invasive Species Program Manager for the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Today, we have partners with us as well, both virtually and in person, to provide an update on the Tahoe Keys Control Methods Test. Really significant progress on a major achievement in trying to find solutions for our largest problem as far as invasive species are concerned. Next slide, please. So today, I'll provide some context and some overview of how we got to where we are today. And then I'll turn it over to Pete Woolcott. He is the Volunteer Water Quality Chair for the Tahoe Keys Property Owners Association. And he'll talk about their commitment and how they got to the point of implementation. And then Dr. Lars Anderson is a science consultant with the TKPOA. He'll provide some progress and next steps. And then I'll turn it over to, then we'll turn it over to Jesse Patterson for the Lead to Save Lake Tahoe. We'll give the perspective of the league and some of the complementing activities that are happening in and around the Keys. Next slide. So the Tahoe Keys Control Methods Test, what is it? It's a multi-year test of multiple treatment methods to achieve a level of knockback utilizing aquatic herbicides, ultraviolet light, and laminar flow aeration in a first year in a one-time application of aquatic herbicides, and then followed up by non-chemical or all non-herbicidal methods to maintain the knockback that's achieved in the test areas. And we'll see a map here momentarily. And so the first year, the the goal of 75% knockback was the objective. And so being able to maintain that knockback in years two and beyond. And so we just finished the first year with year-two activities coming up. But it's a critical and urgent need to implement this test to find these solutions. It is the largest infestation we have as far as aquatic invasive species, aquatic invasive plants are concerned. If you look at that upper square on maybe the upper right of the map, that's about six acres in size, those two channels of the west side of the Tahoe Keys. That represents the largest weed project we've implemented or completed to date, and that's about the same size as Emerald Bay. And then if you notice down in the bottom, that longer rectangle, which is covering a portion of Lake Tlak, that represents the largest project we have happening right now, which is at Taylor-Tlak in the creeks and marshes in that system, and that's at about 17 acres. And so with the Keys at 170 acres, still significantly larger than even the 17 acres, that's the largest project we're implementing right now. So it's really urgent to, or critical to find a solution. It's the largest threat, as I mentioned. It's a major source to other populations in the lake. And it's an innovative approach in and of itself. Not only are we using innovative techniques like ultraviolet light, which was really pioneered here in Lake Tahoe, but also the one-time use of herbicides is innovative. Nobody's ever done that before in trying to ensure that we have all the tools we have available to us to treat this infestation. Next slide, please. So you'll see here some of the examples of some of these non-herbicide innovative approaches in the upper, the upper box is UV light being implemented in the Keys, and then you have bottom barriers and divers assisted suction, and those will be used as we move forward into this next season. Next slide, please. So some of the milestones to get to where we've gotten to today really starts with the success of the overall Aquatic Invasive Species Program. Having that success, not only in prevention, but control, getting localized eradication in many places, giving us credibility and accountability, and that allowed us to obtain further funding to tackle these larger infestations. And then the commitment by TKPOA to sit down and have a collaborative approach to discussing options for this project, and then certainly funding from their end as well. Then TRPA formulated a stakeholder committee to ensure transparency of the public process and getting that public input, having multiple means to provide that input, not only through the normal environmental review process, but also having multiple webinars and public meetings to ensure all the input we could get from the public. And then that stakeholder committee is where the idea of a test came from. That embodies what the AIS program does. We start small and build from our lessons learned. And then that led to a comprehensive environmental analysis that included multiple alternatives, a rigorous scientific approach, getting millions of data points to understand the baseline conditions within the Keys. And the alternatives I mentioned, of course, has to include a no-project alternative. And that was the only alternative that could not be implemented without any significant impacts. And so doing nothing was not an option. And then ultimately, the environmental analysis concluded that the proposed project could be implemented safely to Lake Tahoe. That analysis included multiple redundant, multiple protections, redundant mitigations to ensure that the ultimate protections would be in place for Lake Tahoe. That includes treating early when plants are small, so you have less nutrients being released into the system, but also when water flows are coming into the Keys from the lake, so keeping everything at bay and not entering the lake. Because we're getting all the runoff, especially this year with all the snow, there are no direct tributaries into the Keys. So the walk, the Keys is filled by the lake. And so as snow starts, well, as all the snow has melted, then water goes the other direction. So we wanted to treat early when that flow was still filling up the Keys. Also included double turbidity curtains to ensure any herbicides did not spread beyond the treatment areas. On-call divers to address any issues that may have come up. A use of a tracer dye, it's called, now it's, why am I forgetting what the dyes are? Rhodamine dye, yes, thank you. It mimics the fate and transport of aquatic herbicides, and it can be detected immediately. And so all of the monitoring stations that we had outside of the turbidity curtains could let us know if anything seeped out that triggered all the contingency monitoring that was part of this project as well. Duplicate sampling and along with use of aeration to, not the laminar flow aeration, but aerators to stimulate breakdown of herbicides if necessary. Another mitigation that was identified or included was the use of Foslock, which is a product that combined phosphorus. So you combine up any excessive phosphorus nutrients in the system. That was not used, but it was available. And then all the monitoring was independent. TRPA provided that oversight to ensure that independent monitoring of the test project was included. And then that led to unanimous decisions by both TRPA and the Lahontan Board to move forward with the implementation of the project. And the project started in just a little over a year ago, the late May of 2022. Next slide, please. So what is TRPA's role? Certainly regulatory. As I mentioned, all of those mitigations, those were requirements and necessary for this first-time test, first-time use of herbicide. So we wanted to make sure all of those multiple mitigation measures were in place to ensure all the protections were there for Lake Tahoe. So that occurred through the EIP permit that we issued, along with the Lahontan NPDES permit, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit that was issued by the Water Board. Next slide. And then TRPA has an interest in ensuring that this project is successful because of the significant goals we have to reduce AIS populations throughout the region very significantly, and that has to start with the key, not start with the Keys, but the Keys has to be a major factor in that equation. So achieving localized eradication elsewhere in the lake and now focusing on our largest threat. Next slide. And then engaging stakeholders in the public. I mentioned the stakeholder committee that was formed. We hired a facilitator to guide that process. And as I mentioned before, multiple meetings and engagement opportunities, open houses, just again, making sure we had every opportunity to hear what the public input was on this process and the project. And next slide. And then the independent monitoring here is a map of the project area, all the different pretty colors and dots and shapes. It's a little busy, but this is what we navigated. All of the colored shapes or polygons are treatment areas that include herbicide-only sites, ultraviolet light-only sites, combination sites, and then laminar flow aeration. And then all of the little dots represent all of the monitoring points that TRPA oversaw for water quality parameters, fate and transport of the herbicides, and also efficacy. And so before I turn it over to Pete, he'll kind of talk about how they got to the point of where we are, but just reiterating all of the important mitigations and protections that were in place that was required for TKPOA to implement to ensure a satisfactory process from a regulatory standpoint. But Pete, if you're online, we can turn it over to you to talk about the TKPOA commitment to this project.
You need to unmute Pete.
Is that any better?
That's much better.
Okay, excellent. So thank you, Dennis. So what I wanted to do, I wanted to start with the, what I call the wild ride from permit approval to the, to the start line. And then just give you a brief overview of the summer, not from a technical perspective, but really more from a layperson's homeowner's perspective. But first, the obligatory disclaimer, as Dennis mentioned, I've been the Water Quality Committee Chair for a couple of years. I currently sit on the TKPOA Board of Directors, but I'm a volunteer, so all the tough questions need to go to Dennis, Lars, or Jesse, please. So, you know, the Keys has been at this an awfully long time, 50 years battling weeds. About 20 years spent trying to bring attention, a spotlight to the problem. Five years specifically on this collaborative effort. And then we only get 12 weeks to implement the darn thing. It seemed a little crazy. We'll go to the next slide. I've got a schedule here, the first half of 2022, and I'm not going to take you through through the whole thing, but you know, basically between the red arrows, we had 12 weeks, 12 weeks from the time the TKPOA Board signed off on the permits and more important, the funding for the project till the middle of May, which was the target implementation window. We had 12 weeks to make an awful lot happen. Next slide, please. So you might ask, well, were things a little bit wobbly during this 12 weeks? I would say, oh, yes, without question. When the TKPOA Board had no less than five go-no-go sessions from February to May, when we started, we gave the odds of making it to the start line about a 50/50 on a million-dollar bet, much of which would be sunk if we were unable to get over the start line. By mid-May, the good news is the probability was up to like 80 to 90%. The bad news is that the tab had doubled to closer to $2 million. And, you know, during this intense period, I had a couple of board members ask me, well, you guys had five years to prepare for this thing. You know, why aren't you ready? And, you know, there's an obvious answer. The, the, the funding wasn't available until the permit was signed off. And so despite the fact that I think the Keys started an implementation effort, an actual implementation effort back in October of '21, we had absolutely no funding whatsoever until February. And I think a less obvious, more nuanced answer to that question, you know, this was a pretty controversial project. And it was difficult, actually awkward at times to get answers to tough questions before the permit was approved. And so however hard we tried to get ready, there was just a whole lot that was left to do post-permit approval. And then, you know, the obvious, with the permits being approved when they were, 12 weeks before the permit window, we had a pretty simple choice. It's either 12 weeks or it's a year and 12 weeks. And I had a great discussion with Director Marqueta at the 11th hour, I think about the momentum we had. We lamented the incredible opportunity cost of a delay. And, you know, she convinced me that, that we were ready, ready enough. And we were, you know, we should push ahead, which we did. And I think we're, we're very pleased that, that we did. Next slide. So beyond squeezing about a year's worth of work into 12 weeks, the team faced what we now fondly refer to as the, as the seven miracles to get to the start line. I'd like to just quickly walk you through these. Number one, water depth in the lagoons was a, was a critical factor. And again, as we're concerned about test efficacy, but we're also concerned about just getting boats into treatment areas and access to launch ramps and, and basic logistics stuff. The lake was right at the minimum as we were preparing. It was dropping slowly, and I think as most of you guys know, fortunately, winter hit in April and the lake came up, you know, a little more than six inches. And, and we were able to proceed. So we headed off miracle number, number one. Miracle, next slide. Miracles 2 and 3. So number two, the water temperature needed to rise above 16 degrees C before the permit window. And I'll let Dr. Anderson explain the wheres and the whys of all that. And number three, the lake needed to continue rising until after the permit window. And the two of those combined to create like a two-week window that we had to shoot for. And it was the, it was basically the, the needle that had to be threaded in the spring, you know, many months out from the time that we were making all this preparation. We managed to get past miracles 2 and 3. Number four, we had six to eight weeks to put out RFPs, identify contractors, award contracts, dot i's, cross t's, incredible amount of work, 12 contractors, over 100 people that ended up on the water. And I think more amazing than getting this done was the fact that we ended up with an absolutely superb team. So miracle number four worked out pretty well. Next slide, number five. Turbidity curtains and boat barriers basically define the restricted areas. And beyond just the infrastructure, we had, excuse me, policy, procedures, homeowner notifications, et cetera, to make sure that this physical infrastructure would actually work. And I've got a, the next slide shows a, shows a map. And so we had, we had 25 test areas that I think Dennis highlighted in his, his brief speech. And they were broken down into three restricted areas, Lake Tlak in green, Area B in yellow on the east side of the, of the lagoon, and Area A, the larger one in red, on the west side of the lagoon. And all of these areas were closed to all water, water activity for the duration of the test. And in particular, the, the two areas in the west lagoon connected to the lake, the red one and the yellow one, had not only curtains, but they had boat barriers to make sure that a boater wouldn't inadvertently try to, you know, get into the restricted area and damage the curtains. I think the next slide shows, you can see the, the Area B curtains. There's two lines of yellow there with a, with a very, very robust fence protecting them from any water activity, lakeward. All of this infrastructure was in place basically a week before the, the test window. So we got past number five. Next slide, number six. The monitoring specs. And here, it's just, this is great teamwork, Dennis's team, one of our contractors, absolutely integral to developing a feasible plan. And the issue here is, it's one thing to define the data that you might want to see from an incredibly sophisticated test like this. It's entirely another to figure out how to logistically collect that data, given 24 hours a day, limited sampling windows, limited access to boats and personnel, lab turnaround time, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the, the, the job of marrying the data requirement with the logistical collection was truly one of the miracles to get to the start line. Great work by the team. And then last, go next slide. And we'll skip this one. Dennis showed that. That's the, the, the monitoring map. The last is the water must be flowing into the lake, or excuse me, into the Keys from the lake at the, at the beginning of the test period during the application of herbicides. And this is a really, really simple concept, but it turned out to be anything but simple. High tech didn't work. We tried a really sophisticated Doppler device and it just couldn't differentiate between the lake water and lagoon water. We did have a manual backup that did work. But I think what's noteworthy here is we gave this particular variable enormous weight. Effectively, we had an 11th hour go-no-go that was close to a flip of a coin. And I think the learning that we got from the study of flow in the lead-up to the test gives us some food for thought for how we might proceed in the future. So, you know, we're trying to measure flow down to something on the order of 1/100 of a foot per second. And there might be some other variables that, that are really more important to consider next time we do this, if we do it. So how did we do? Well, it definitely feels somewhat miraculous. We made it to the start line. And there was some, what I'd call meteorological good fortune involved, and we just got lucky on the weather, the winter, the lake rise. And thank God we did, because I think we're all very pleased that we got over the start line. But, you know, some of these other factors, it just boiled down to hard work, teamwork, competence, and, and great process. So I gotta just pass on my kudos to the team for, for getting us there. Beyond the miracles on the next slide, we met our data collection requirements, 90% of target. Dr. Anderson will talk to the meaning of all that. And I think very important to us, no herbicides were detected anywhere near the lake. The Keys Property Owners Association, we took our commitment to the permit, the stakeholders and the public very seriously. And we're, you know, we're pleased that we were able to deliver on that. Next slide, please. But unfortunately, the year, the first year one was not without its problems and challenges. And I lump them into three categories. The weather was absolutely horrific through the spring and into the, into June. We had, I think we had five gales during the first three weeks. It really pushed our ability to react and adapt, but we were able to, I think, deal with, with everything that the, the weather gods threw at us. Funding is, was, and will be an issue. The three-year CMT just for the Keys alone is about 4X our original funding level. We've bridged part of that. We've got more work to do there. And then lastly, you know, the turbidity curtains ended up in place a lot longer than we expected. And I think because of that, we had water quality deteriorate to a level that was, was very, very unpleasant. And I'd like to just dig into that briefly here. Next slide. Personally, I think the most painful part of all this is we stood up in front of the, the homeowners in February when we were, you know, rolling out the, the test. And we thought, based on modeling that we'd done in our aquatic pesticide application permit, we thought that we might be able to live with a closure three to five weeks. By the time we finally, you know, had a procedure together, you know, we padded that a little bit, added two, three weeks. And we told people, you know, we expected a closure through mid-July. I think by the third week in June, it was clear that we weren't going to make that. We moved that bar till the middle of August. By August 1st, we were actually talking about, what are we going to do if we get snow and ice before we can remove the curtains? we can remove the curtains? And in the end, I think it was, you know, it was 15 weeks in total for the the area on the west side, area A, before it it could be opened. And on the next slide, adding insult to injury. Again, I think partly due to the extended closure, we had extended algae blooms. And there were areas for a couple of weeks in August that were so unpleasant due to the odors that, you know, you really just didn't want to be in the neighborhood. You know, fortunately, we had some cooler weather after Labor Day and it 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 cleared itself up pretty quickly. But it was a it was a tough summer. So I ask, you know, where does that where does that leave us? I think despite the challenges, as I said, we are very relieved. We got over the test line. We're very pleased with the results to date. There's some lesson learned that will require adaptation going forward. There was a little bit of grumbling amongst some of the homeowners, as you might imagine. But we remain focused on the prize. The prize is a long term solution to weed control. And it needs to be environmentally sound. It needs to be economically viable and it needs to be formidable. And I think one measure of our commitment to that to that goal. We had to, we we ran a referendum with the homeowners in November, very fresh after the the summer experience. We got an incredible turnout, you know, record quorum kind of numbers. And the members approved by more than a margin of four to one to fund year two of the of the project. So that that feels pretty good. We also got the TKPOA Board of Directors to kick off a complimentary, what we'll hope will be a collaborative effort, but a complimentary water quality effort to the to the weed control program here. So I'll close with the toughest question I get from homeowners by far. What guarantee is there here? And there is no guarantee. This is a three year test. We're one year in. We don't know what the solution is going to look like. But we know that failure is not an option. And we know that the collaborative effort that we're pursuing is the best path, the only path. So we feel we feel pretty good about about what we're doing and and the progress we've made so far. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Anderson. But I think before I do, I just, I'd like to acknowledge the critical contribution that this agency has in this collaborative fight against a biological threat. And a and a nod to the great team that you guys have, Kim, Dennis, Emily. And of course Julie and and now Kat. So with that, I'll turn it over to to Lars.
Thanks, Pete. Well, with that background, what I'd like to do is focus a little bit on results from from last year and really focus primarily on the the efficacy of the treatments, but and talk a little bit about the monitoring as well. So I will talk about how we achieve the the level of control that we're looking at and how we measure that, a little bit about the monitoring we're doing, and then end up discussing a little bit about the second year treatments with our group B methods, the non herbicide methods. I wanted to show this rake because a lot of the information we obtained on the effectiveness of the treatments came from physical samples using the rake system like this. And in this one, you can see there's curlyly pondweed in the lower left. In the upper left hand side and right hand side, there's a little bit of milfoil. These rakes are really important because they tell us not only the relative amount of the plants that are there, but also the percent of each species on the rake. So just to give you an idea, the extent of this, almost 8,000 rakes samples were taken during the season last year to obtain that data every two weeks. These were done. In addition to that, we used basically a high highly sophisticated fish finder device, basically a hydro scan system that allows you to tell where the plants are in the relative abundance or bio volume. So with those two methods primarily, we can tell what what treatments did to the plants, not only the treatments on the target plants, but also the native plants that we're interested in and actually preserving. So next slide. But I wanted to summarize the results in a very simple way to do this. And and just to begin with, everything that looks green and pointed up is a good result. On the left hand side are the treatments that we used. This has already been mentioned. We had a herbicide only with Endothal. Tricloper, another herbicide, I should point out, Endothal is actually capable of controlling all three target plants that we're we're interested in, Eurasian water milfoil, coontail and curly leaf pondweed. Tricloper is extremely selective. It will only control Eurasian water milfoil, but the reason that we use this is because it's a systemic herbicide, which means it moves into the roots and rhizomes and presumably would give us a much longer control potentially than Endothal would do that. And then Dennis also mentioned UV methods. So that's on the left hand side, the bottom. So that's that method was used in some sites by itself. And I kind of highlighted the 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 last two rows down there because those were actually our combination sites. And Pete mentioned the problem with the curtains being in place for over 100 days. That prevented us from getting in to do the UV part of the combination treatments, which are now going on as we speak, actually, this year. So across the top, you can see what our metrics are. Dennis mentioned the vessel hole clearance, biomass reduction, bio volume reduction of 75% and what impact we had on the conditions for the native plants. So if you look at the Endothal treatment only, basically, we had 100% in our sites that were able to reduce the or achieve that three foot vessel hole clearance for navigation purposes. All those Endothal treatments also reduced the bio volume by at least 75% or more from target plants. But the interesting thing on the Endothal is we really didn't have much impact on our native Aladea plant, which is a good thing. That's why that arrow is green going up. And then if you shift down to Tricloper, the very selective one, you can see that we did not achieve vessel hole clearance very well. And the reason for that is because even though we did control Eurasian water milfoil, the other two target species continued to grow in those sites. And if you look at bio volume, it reflects the same thing, not such a great achievement there. But if you just look at the Eurasian water milfoil, we had over 90%. In some cases, 100% controlled. And we're still seeing that this this spring, actually, we're not even finding milfoil in these sites. And with Tricloper, it does not affect our native plant. So that's another good green arrow going up as well. Looking at the UV sites, we had a great response on the vessel hole clearance, almost achieved our 75% control in most, in some cases. But very effective reduction. That's why it's kind of a slanted green, but it was it was effective and brought us into the second year. The only downside on the UV was we did have some reduction in the native plant community. So it's really not a selective approach, even though it has other advantages as well. So you can see that whole pattern here is we were in in terms of the complexity of this project and all the monitoring that went on, we were actually achieving some really good results at the end of the day. Uh, next slide. Thank you. I wanted to show you what these results kind of look like. The upper left hand side is 14 days after treatment of the Tricloper. Again, that's the selective herbicide that only controls Eurasian water milfoil. And that kind of mushy green stuff, the arrow is pointing to is is decomposing Eurasian water milfoil. But if you look carefully in the upper left hand side, there's some green tissue and that is curly leaf pondweed and some milfoil, which that herbicide does not control. In contrast, six weeks after treatment on the right hand upper side are two rake poles from control sites. These are untreated sites. You can kind of see the biomass there. And then the lower left hand one is six weeks treatment, post treatment also in the Endothal site. And although it looks like you've got a lot of plants, that's 95% Aladea canidensis, our native plant, which I I sort of blew up in a picture on the right hand side. And the bottom shows you the healthy condition of the the native plant. So these are really good results. And and this is the kind of information that we got every two weeks from these sites using the rake pools. Uh, next slide. Thank you. So Pete mentioned the the curtain catastrophe, our long term curtain and and employment deployment, brother. This is examples of that. You can see Lake Tlak on the right hand side and and some of the other sites on the left hand side. But what I wanted to mention too is we were really careful about this. The lower left hand picture shows the team that was employed to as a spill prevention team in case there was a spill from the application of the herbicides. But we didn't have any spills. It was all done very well professionally. But this this team followed around the application crew and the boats every time they went to a site in case there were some inadvertent unintentional spill that occurred. And we did have to produce some temporary ramps to get boats into these areas. And Pete mentioned the exclusion from boating, but it was also a problem for getting some of the monitoring boats in as well. So this this temporary ramp helped a lot in that case. So how were these applied? Next slide, please. Now, this shows how the liquid Endothal was applied on the left hand side. And you'll notice Dennis mentioned the Rhodamine WT dye, which is a tracer dye. That is just mixed with the herbicide and you can see it comes out in the submerged hoses that are used to apply it. It really is a good way to detect where the herbicide might be moving. And it was very, very useful in terms of our monitoring process. On the right hand side, Tricloper was also applied in some of these combination areas along the shoreline using a solid pelleted formulation. You can see those, I circled those little white dots there. That's actually the formulation hitting the water and it sinks down and it lands on top of the plants. In this case, the milfoils are target. So that is a very localized way to approach using aquatic herbicides. And this is used quite commonly to to do spot treatments or even larger treatments where you know you have one particular target plant you want to control. So what they did in this granular application was when they were done with that, then they'd run by through here with the Rhodamine dye to also find out where that herbicide might be going in those sites. So we had a lot of good information about where where to look for herbicides and the monitoring would take place. Uh, next slide. So I mentioned the these scans that were done. And and this is kind of a pretty telling result of the of the entire year last year. First of all, this is a some results of 120 days after the first treatments that were made. And to give you some background on this, the way the scans work is that it gives you the relative bio volumes, I mentioned, of the plants underwater. And anything green in this case is good. Anything red is bad. Let's look at that way. And those colors in between are sort of in between moderate levels of the bio volume of the masses of the plants. Couple of things to keep in mind is this bio volume scanning device does not distinguish the species. It's total submerged plants that are down there. But if you look at the at the side, and I'm going to hit one more click on the screen there, please. So the left hand side is area A that that Pete was mentioning, which had the the curtains up. These were isolated areas, area B, A, B and C. The area A, you can see mostly was Endothal with some combination treatments. And you can see 120 days post treatment really cleared. In fact, it's staying clear as we speak today, pretty much our Endothal sites are staying very clear. What we're seeing in there now is mostly the native plant. Look at area B, that was a Tricloper treatment. You can see there's some sort of a moderate effect there. And and again, because this is just all plants, what we're seeing there primarily is Eurasian water, not Eurasian water milfoil, but curly leaf pondweed and and coontail. Because we did control the Eurasian water milfoil there. But if you look at the Lake Tlak area C down there, you can see we had great results. That was also an Endothal only treatment site. So you can see the kind of results. The UV sites are in sort of the middle area, the areas pointing to those. And those are the end of those sites. And we had pretty good effect with those as well. There's a couple of red spots, but this is this is 120 days post treatment. And then Dennis mentioned the LFA, the Lammer Flow Aeration, those are in the middle that shows the aerials. And what you see right away is we didn't really have any impact on the on the submerged plants in the LFA. And we didn't really expect that. That's a longer term effect on nutrients we're hoping to see in those sites. But overall, you can see we had really good results lasting through the season and and certainly some of that lasting into the spring right now as we speak. Okay, next slide. So I mentioned, Pete mentioned the herbicide monitoring, you know, where thousands of samples were taken. As he pointed out, nothing ever reached the West Channel or the or the lake itself. The Rhodamine worked really well. We had a couple of escapes off of the curtains, which were immediately re-sampled and found out it dissipated quickly. The real issue is interesting is that the Endothal became non detect at five micrograms per liter within 45 days. So had we only used Endothal, presumably the curtains could have come out a lot earlier. But the Tricloper was the the stickler in this one. Reaching that level of one microgram per liter took over 100 days, as Pete pointed out. And that really was a problem. But the other part of that was we discovered that the water quality monitoring showed we had huge increases in turbidity in that area A that I mentioned where the Endothal was used. And the problem was the turbidity was that it reduced the light levels and Tricloper is degraded primarily by photolysis. In other words, it takes light to break it down. And with that turbidity we had, which went up to the end of 30 NT units, we certainly slowed down that process. I'm sure that was one of the reasons we had to wait 100 days to get that that level down to one microgram per liter. But Pete also mentioned the the problem in general with isolating these areas kind of as stagnant sites. And I think that's one of the lessons learned is ideally, we certainly want to have curtains. If we use them again, we move much earlier. And the question really is, can you make some adjustments so you don't need to use the curtains there, depending on how you approach any potential use of herbicides? But clearly, what we did with the curtains was we, for longer than we expected, created kind of stagnant conditions in that site, really not the the most ideal way to do it. Next slide. So we're into year two. And basically, the decisions we're making now are where to put our group B sites, which are the non herbicide sites. But also to following up with the UVC treatments in those UV only sites. And using UV as a spot treatment as well. And the really interesting thing here is we're waiting, partly waiting to see what's happening. And and this year is quite different, as everybody knows from last year. Last year, we had low water, high temperatures. This year, we have a lot of water coming in that's much cooler. We're at least two to three weeks later in getting our 15 to 16 degree temperatures we needed. And Pete mentioned that. And that's primarily that that level is where the plants start growing enough to get an effective control of herbicides. For example, you have to have plants that are actively growing. So you need that 15 to 16 degree C range. And we're now into that now. We're up to 17 or 18 degrees right now in the Keys. So we're certainly in that that ideal range. So we're trying to sustain what we achieved last year with these group B methods. And I mentioned the bottom on that bottom bullet, prevent turyon formation. Most of you or some of you may be aware that that curly leaf pondweed is spreading so fast because it makes these vegetative structures called turyons. And each plant produces dozens of them. So we've got really thousands of turyons produced every summer. They sprout in the fall and the next year they're ready to take off and create more of a problem. So we're looking at those numbers pretty carefully. And the bottom arrow shows that we're continuing to do our environmental monitoring as we did last year. The only difference, of course, this year where there's no herbicide use, so we don't have to do the herbicide monitoring, which is extremely helpful in trying to get things done. But basically, still a lot of environmental monitoring that's connected with the group B methods as well. Uh, next slide. So some of the decisions we had to make following last year were where where these group B methods are going to be used. So we have kind of a flow diagram that was that was put together for the CMT. And if you look at the top row, this is kind of what it tells us what the results are of year one as a as a starting point. And there's three cases where we wouldn't do group B methods. On the left hand side, if we don't get our criteria met, 75% reduction and the vessel hole clearance, those would not be eligible for group B methods. On the far right hand side, the other shaded, no group B treatment would be if only the desirable native plants come up or if no target plants come up. Those are pretty unrealistic, really. It's it's a it's a very patchy distribution of plants out there. So in reality, the 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 middle two boxes are what we're focusing on. And the difference really is is mainly whether we see a lot of native plants coming up. And if that's the case, we want to use the most selective methods. If you look down to the left hand side, the bottom, that's using the diver assisted suction hand removal. Because a diver can actually distinguish between the native plants and the target plants. And those presumably work in less than 0.3 acres. When you get larger than that, it's pretty hard to do with with divers. So you go to bottom barriers or UV light spot treatments. And that's kind of where we are now. In fact, we're in the in the mode of deciding where these are going to go based on our our spring sampling for the rake samples and the scans that we're doing right now. But we've made a lot of progress. We already have the some of the barriers in place for group B methods as of last week and this week. So next slide. So the next step, we've we've already Pete mentioned the contractors. We have them already arranged and and set up for the bottom barrier placements and for diver assisted removal. The equipment's been prepped and ready to go. Baseline's been going on since mid May and will continue as well. And then we'll be identifying these new group B site locations as we speak. We're having meetings practically twice a week to get this figured out. And so it's a moving target in a way because it's a cool spring, different conditions, and we're waiting to see which of the target plants are coming up where. But we've made some decisions on bottom barriers already. And those are being in place already. And then the next, the next will be the dash and also UV spot treatments. So where we are right now with group B in second year is the the UV only sites are being treated by the the UV equipment. Bottom barriers are going in. We're signing, we're going to decide where those hand removal sites will be. And all those those treatments will again be monitored very carefully and very diligently as we go to through year two of the project. But I think it's, to me, it's really an amazing success. I mean, I've been involved with a lot of these projects. This is the most intensely monitored aquatic weed control program that I have ever seen anywhere, whether it's the US or internationally. It's it's a huge undertaking. And I agree with Pete, we we had a great team and a lot of accomplishment with that and 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 accolades to everyone involved. And I agree with Pete, we, we had a great team and a lot of accomplishment with that and, and, and accolades to everyone involved. And TRPA really did stand up for this. This is, this is great, uh, monitoring and, and independent review of the project, very important to all of it. I think I'll stop there, be happy to answer questions. I'm sure anyone, anyone will do that. Thanks very much.
Excellent. Thank you all. Do, do you want to go to Jesse first before? Okay. Absolutely. On to Jesse.
Hopefully you have uh, less questions and not more after I go on the scene. Um, good morning, everybody. Um, Commission Chair, Vice Chair, Fellow Commissioners, TRP Staff, everyone, thank you for your time today. Uh, my name's Jesse Patterson, I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for the League to Save Lake Tahoe. Um, been here just over ten years and this was one of the first projects I took on when I started uh, in my tenure. Um, just a little bit of context, the League to Save Lake Tahoe, um, we've been around sixty-six years. Our mission has remained unchanged over those sixty-six years. And we really focus on water quality and its clarity is kind of our barometer for lake health. Um, and how we look to preserve and protect the, the lake for now and future generations. The reason I underline that is I just want to reiterate that every decision we make on what we, we pursue. Where we put our resources is with that focus. Um, and we would never support or push something that we believe threatened water quality or clarity. Uh, and that's one reason we're actually a huge advocate for the control methods test. Because we believe it's essential to keeping Tahoe blue. So not just addressing aquatic invasive species in the Keys or Lake Tahoe, but to truly protect water quality and clarity for the entire lake. Um, just briefly, my background's in aquatic biology and environmental science and economics. Um, this project has all those wonderful things all together. Uh, it's, it's the greatest PhD dissertation you could probably ever do. Uh, I don't think I get a PhD at the end of this, but it's been, it's been a wonderful project. So next slide, please. Um, so it's been, like I said, it's been a decade-long journey for the league um, to get to this point. I'll walk you through it really briefly. I just wanted to add some context outside of the test so you could understand um, the league's position, why we're involved, how we're involved and where we're headed. Um, as I mentioned in twenty twelve, we learned about the issue um, at Tahoe Keys through the Lake Tahoe Aquatic Invasive Species Program. We launched a citizen science program in twenty thirteen called Eyes on the Lake and worked very closely with the Tahoe Keys property owners. To identify and monitor where these plants are, where they're spreading and, and ideally how to stop them. Um, several things happened between twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen that made us realize that our traditional approach of just advocacy and engagement alone would not be enough. Uh, we needed to put our money where our mouth was and financially contribute to this solution. And in twenty seventeen, we entered into an agreement with the Tahoe Keys property owners. To fund non-chemical control method testing, containment methods, water quality improvement methods, additional monitoring. And this was really one of the first times in league history, we put that level of money towards a project specifically. But we felt the progress needed to be made in this area. And we, we also felt that we had to contribute financially to really be taken seriously and to move the needle. Um, also in twenty seventeen and to, to current, as was mentioned, we started um, seeing harmful algal blooms in the Tahoe Keys. Now in Lake Tahoe proper, as well as the rest of the Western United States. And you know, these are largely driven by climatic conditions, but we realized this was something that was escalating uh, in the wrong direction. Next slide, please. Uh, there's a wonderful photo for you of uh, harmful algal blooms and aquatic plants hanging out together. Uh, they definitely affect each other. Uh, next slide, please. So in twenty eighteen, um, the stakeholder committee for this effort for the control methods test was, was begun. It was the third or fourth stakeholder effort I was involved in um, for the Keys. So uh, a lot of efforts to address this, um, all very informative. But it was the twenty eighteen method that really got us to where we are today in this test. At that same time, um, the league uh, was fortunate enough to work with the Keys property owners to implement a bubble curtain. Which is a technology that's been used since the seventies for aquaculture and other uses around the world, but had never been used for the containment. Of aquatic invasive weeds to prevent spread. Um, so we designed a, a very new design, um, included that at the Keys, along with additional hydroacoustic scanning in Lake Tahoe proper. To see what was happening just outside the Keys and, and we helped fund that. Next slide, please. I think I have a photo of the first bubble curtain. Uh, so this was in September twenty eighteen, like I said, a, a company um, out of Canada came and helped us install this. Uh, a lot of learning, right? These had been used at sea level, so one had never been installed at six thousand uh, feet plus. So that affects pressure, it affects a lot of things on how it operates. But we put it in, we started testing it, um, and they're still there today and have been expanded, which is very exciting. Next slide, please. Uh, in twenty nineteen, um, through input from other stakeholder members, we thought we needed to test a technology called Lammer Flow Aeration. Which is a way of injecting oxygen into the sediment without creating turbidity. Um, and that oxygenation could theoretically kickstart the biology around the sediment and eat up the muck layer that was providing the organics for the plants. So we really wanted to change the conditions in the Keys to something that was less hospitable um, for those aquatic weeds. So in twenty nineteen, we funded a six acre um, test site in the Keys, which is still operating and has been included in the C and, the control methods test. And we're actually looking at doing some enhanced treatments in that area this year. Um, it's very exciting because Lammer Flow is more of a maintenance, water quality, long-term approach. Um, and so you need it to, over time, to see how it's going to be effective. Um, and we're doing that in the control methods test. Next slide, please. Probably have a picture of bubbles, there you go. Uh, there's a Lammer exploration. Bubbles without turbidity. Um, in twenty twenty, um, control of the Tahoe Keys offshore area, it used to be called the complex, it's offshore. We invested in control of this area, the hydroacoustic scanning, some personal uh, experiences. We realized this was a much bigger um, infestation than we originally thought and it was growing. Um, and um, we implemented some Lammer Flow in the west channel to see how that might affect a different area of the Keys. We funded both of those and worked very closely with TRPA's team on those control methods. Uh, next photo, please. Next slide. Um, this is kind of what we saw, right? So what we saw was the infestation in the Keys was creeping its way out into Lake Tahoe. Predominantly in the, in the dredge channels for boating, but also far beyond that. You can actually see in this photo right here, um, this was August twenty twenty before the first control treatments were done. Um, suction dredging was used to treat these areas and that's now a tool we're looking at. Uh, as part of the control methods test as well. So a lot of learning has happened and informed the control methods test prior to even the first year of application. Uh, next photo. Or a slide, please. Um, so here, here's a map uh, of the Keys complex, roughly a hundred and five acres outside of the Tahoe Keys is infested. Uh, as Dennis mentioned earlier, six acres was the next closest in size in the lake proper. So you know, orders of magnitude larger. Um, the orange areas were high density like you saw on the previous photo. The other areas are a little patchier, but since this map was done, um, those patchier areas are getting thicker and expanding. So this is something that's in the lake and happening right now. Um, basically, we don't have time to wait um, to figure this out. We need to start moving, uh, and that's why, one reason we're supportive of the test. Next slide, please. In twenty twenty-one, um, we doubled down on a double bubble curtain uh, in the East Channel. Cause if one bubble curtain's good, then, then two's definitely better, right? Um, but we wanted to see if, if we could really focus on containment. I mean, this had been almost ten years since I started working on this. It was very obvious that a solution in the Keys was going to take a long time. We had to learn what to do and was there a way to contain it or to slow down the spread into the lake to allow us to do this properly? A true test where we learn, we adapt, we create a long-term plan and implement that without continuing to threaten the lake and, and the spread in the lake proper. So we invested in a, a double bubble curtain in the East Channel, as well as additional control methods at the complex or the offshore infestation. Next slide, please. Um, there are only two areas where the lagoons enter the lake, which that does offer an opportunity for potential containment. Next slide, please. Um, there is the bubble curtain on the west channel with the enhanced Lammer Flow added to it. Um, next slide, please. And here's the double bubble, uh, so mentioned in the East Channel, are you alliteration fans? Um, bring that up again. And this was a different design I wanted to point out as well, because we're looking at slightly different designs. So this is diagonal lines versus a, a triangle shape. And, and part of this design is can we also block the fragments which spread? Uh, dislodge from boats as boats pass through and direct those um, fragments to the edges of the bulkhead where they can be more easily collected and removed. So that was all the things we were thinking about in the design of these bubble curtains. Next slide, please. Um, fast forward to last year, I guess now, control methods test finally got in the water. You heard a lot about that today. Um, I cannot reiterate um, how impressive it was, how much was accomplished, leading up to it, getting it in the water approvals, public outreach, implementation. The amount of things that were accomplished in such a short period of time, um, so holistically and in depth, um, and giving us. I believe he said seventy-five thousand data points, more information for us to learn. The point of a test is to learn, so we can have, you know, a, a better deck of cards to play with when we deal the hand for a long-term solution. So we need to learn as much as possible and, and it was truly impressive to see what we accomplished in year one. Next slide, please. So uh, I think it's obvious, the league supports the control methods test. Um, here are some reasons why, um, the status quo is destroying the lake. Um, that the no action alternative for this test was the only one that showed significant unmitigated impacts. Um, that essentially meant that doing what we are doing now is making things worse and we have plenty of evidence of that, hence the need to test something. Um, current methods that we had in our toolbox were just not effective or enough. There was not going to be a silver bullet for the Tahoe Keys. We needed to look at proven technologies from around the world, emerging technologies like UVC light. Technologies that are applied in a different way and for a different purpose, like Lammer Flow Aeration. And everything in between in combination and isolation, we had to figure it out. Um, the conditions in the Keys were getting worse. And I mentioned the no action alternative. And environmental variability is a very real thing as evidenced by last year and now this year in low water, high water and, and everything else. So the CMT, while posing no threat to the lake, um, doing nothing did, and it was a three-year test. So year one, it's very encouraging to see the results we did. But in the league's mind, the test cannot be assessed until the end of year three. The idea is to knock it back and maintain it there um, without herbicide use in the future. And that will require extensive adaptive management. And adaptive management is really the key here. And it's not just adapting and learning about what works to control plants, but how do you actually implement it in the Tahoe Keys? How do you implement it in a way that balances recreation access? How do you monitor it? What do you monitor? Um, how are we doing these things and how do you mitigate impacts that you see, right? We learn new impacts as we tested in year one, between years one and two, two and three. And then in the long-term plan, we will have to do a lot of adapting. And also, um, the league has continued to, uh, and committed to this. Um, through the tests, certainly, the development of the long-term test. Um, we just recommitted financially to participate in the next two years to do additional testing. Uh, and implementation, our, our staff time, our political capital, our financial investment, we all believe is essential to solving this problem. Um, and, and will remain committed throughout it. Um, before I end, I just wanted to um, give some kudos to, of course, to TRPA, the board, the staff for following through on this. Being open to adaptability of a three-year test. Um, tackling one of the biggest challenges, as Dennis pointed out, we've never attempted to do this at Tahoe, but this is something we can't ignore. And willing to learn and progress to get to a solution over time. Um, I know that takes, there's some risk there and that takes some, some courage sometimes, but TRPA, LaHawn and other agencies have been very supportive. Um, the Tahoe Keys property owners have shown their commitment, not just to the test, but continuing beyond both financially and through these challenges. And then having the involvement of the science community and the Tahoe Science Advisory Council in particular, is hugely important to the league. Cause it gives that science backing, that third-party review and allows us to learn properly for application. Um, so many, many people need to be uh, given kudos for this project. But like it's been mentioned numerous times, we're midstream right now. We're, we're not to where we need to be, but we, we need to continue. Um, next slide. Um, I did want to share one other thing that's pretty exciting. So in recent, in the recent past, we have new owners at the Tahoe Keys Marina, which is the lagoons to the right of where the control methods test is. Sorry, to the east of where the control methods test is. They've been a wonderful partner so far and actually have committed financially and use of their area to test. Uh, additional containment technologies. So the photos there are two, two new technologies that are um, being piloted in the United States for the first time in Tahoe this year. To enhance collection of fragments and containment. Um, and this is something we're very excited about to add to that, that aforementioned double bubble curtain, along with these other technologies. But we need to figure out how to truly get containment of this. And these are lessons that can be learned and used elsewhere in Tahoe, but also elsewhere in the world dealing with these issues. Um, the control methods test as well as containment. And now both sides of the lagoons are involved in this process of tackling the invasive species at the Keys. So we really, really believe we're making progress and we're bringing more partners and people in. And I encourage everyone to continue the progress. I believe it's my last slide is next. Um, so we, we truly have a choice here. Um, you know, the lake on the left or the right in your photo, uh, not geographically accurate. Um, California's not that much worse than Nevada. The lake doesn't care about the invasive species, but we truly have a choice. Um, if we want to have the lake on the right, the clear water in the photo, we need to address the biggest threat ecologically to the lake, which is in the Tahoe Keys. Um, so thank you for your time, thank you for your commitment, I'm happy to answer any questions. Glad to be part of the team. Yeah, I think we just have one summary slide, I'll be brief. Tracey, advance. Yeah, I just wanted to provide a quick summary before we uh, answer any questions that you may have or, or the public. Uh, just that it is an urgent need. We truly need to find solutions through this test to be able to implement and control for the long-term. Uh, finding those solutions is critical to the long-term health of the lake. Uh, lots of coordination and collaboration, lots of smart people working really hard and diligently, both internally and with all of our partners to. Uh, get to where we are today. So uh, again, thanks to all of our partners and, and team to, to get to where we are. Uh, comprehensive monitoring protections, very science-based rigorous approach to monitoring to make sure we have all those protections in place. Uh, to not only understand what the test is telling us, uh, and then how we implement for the long-term. Getting encouraging results from the first year. And now you've heard about some next steps, UV light has already started uh, just this week. Uh, uh, in some of those uh, areas that we unfortunately were not able to hit last year. And then all of the complementing efforts Jesse just mentioned there with some more innovative approaches. So um, it's been a long road, but still a longer road ahead of us. And it's been a challenge, but also rewarding because we are getting some really good information. And like I said, it's critical to find those long-term solutions. Thank you.
Thank you all. Great presentation and really highly impressive, I think. Um, the collaboration is yeah, incredible. Well done. And now it's our turn as APC members to ask some questions or. Or uh, obtain further information. So why don't we start in the room here and then we can go online, okay? So any uh, APC members, any want to follow up with anything? Garth, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, I have a question about the UVC light. Um, knowing that it kills all the plants in the, you know, including the natives. Is there any sort of measurement that's being taken or monitoring in terms of recruitment of native plants back into the areas where all the plants were removed?
Yeah, those rake poles that Lars, Dr. Anderson mentioned, that will be ongoing throughout the life of the project. Uh, the fact that UV light is not selective uh, is very similar to the other approaches. Or some of the other approaches we implement in the lake with the bottom barriers, those aren't selective either. And what we do see, at least in the lake, is uh, those native populations rebound faster after uh, treatments have occurred. Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, everybody else here? Oh, yeah, Jennifer.
Um, Jennifer Carr, I just had a quick question um, about the pictures that you had for the Marina, the two new technologies. Um, can you describe those a little bit more? One of them looks kind of like a Roomba for water.
Yeah, it's a Roomba for water. Um, yeah, they're, they're named after superheroes. It's a French company, I'm not sure exactly what they're going, but so one is the Pixie Drone and was the Kovak Thor. So uh, we're working on a, a rebranding, renaming uh, part of the project. Um, so there's two technologies, one is indeed a, a remote controlled Roomba on water. It picks up floating fragments, um, which is the primary way the plants spread is through fragment. Um, but it also picks up other floating debris, so plastics, styrofoams, um, there's filters to pick up hydrocarbons. And it also does live water quality monitoring with different monitor you can insert into the unit. So it's got a couple of things that are going on. Um, and we're going to be looking at operating that, it's electric. Um, and you can do a remote control or you can set up like a, a GPS course that it can run. And so we're going to be working with the Marina on, on different operations. Yeah, there's a lot of fun with robots, there'll be lights on it, you know, we'll make it, we'll make it exciting. Um, hopefully not danger, but um, we'll find, depends on who's operating, I guess. Uh, the other technology is essentially a passive skimmer. So we tried a technology like this about five years ago called Seabins. And, and they mount to the side, they're electric powered, they sift water through them and through a filter. So they capture, the idea is that that could be mounted on the edges of the bubble curtains where I, I mentioned they're kind of corralled to the edges. To see if it's a twenty-four, seven kind of collection. Cause right now it's people on boats uh, once or twice a day going out and skimming up what's collected. But if we had something that was mounted, uh, that could be collecting full-time, it might allow us to get those fragments out. Um, and, and then the, um, the Roomba, the Pixie, you know, new name. Uh, we'll be treating those areas on either side of the bubble curtain to remove fragments. Um, I failed to mention earlier that we are doing a fairly focused efficacy study on bubble curtains this year on both sides to see what is getting through. So like, we have anecdotal data, we have photo data that's shown they're being contained, but we didn't know how much, what percentage is being contained. Um, so we're going to look at that this year with and without those additional robot technologies.
Yeah, so when you say both sides, you mean like a Lakeward and, and inside the channel as well? Or both sides being the east and west?
Um, good, good question, both, both of those. So the west channel design as well as the east channel design with the different methods. But to, to measure efficacy, we're going to have to look at Lakeward and Lagoon Ward of, of the current, what's getting through.
Yeah, cause that was going to be my next question. If you have plants that are outside in the lake, they're being turned up and then the boats come in. That bubble curtain's going to eliminate any of that material coming in. So it's good to hear that you are taking a look on Lakeward of those bubble curtains and removing any of the fragments on that site too.
Yes, and, and also in between the two curtains now too, offers kind of a third area of assessment. Um, and then in that, the project to control the um, the offshore complex. The offshore complex, um, we're also looking at physically removing either through dredging if that, when that happens or through other methods to create a physical buffer. Between um what's in the lagoons and what's in the lake, um, and that bubble curtain, then we believe could be even more effective. Um, so we're, we're working with all of those projects. It truly is like three EIP projects together um in this area to look at, look at this issue.
Yeah, maybe uh one, one more quick question about the bubble curtains with um. You know, the Tahoe Keys Marina and some of the large boats, the tour boats that are going in and out of there, is there any sort of outreach to? The, you know, captains or the people to slow down in the area and allow the bubbles to really. Work their way on the bottoms of the boats, or I mean, i- is, is there an outreach that's happening with the, with that?
Um, fantastic question. Um, it was attempted in the past with the new Marina partner. It's actually happening, I think, very effectively. Um, we co-hosted uh aquatic invasive species training with the Keys Marina staff. They had. I think fifteen of their staff attended training along with the concessionaire there, the boat rental company. Um, Tahoe Sports, their staff attended, and then California State Parks sent three of their divers that work in Emerald Bay to come be trained as well. We just had that in May and we talked about um all of the things you just mentioned, and they're going to disseminate that information to, I believe there's thirty or forty concessionaires of tour boats and other things. This information will be shared with, so the, the amount of outreach is, is escalated and I, I feel like we're getting to where we need to be to share that information.
Yeah, just to, to add to that, all of the contractors that we have out there that are working on this project are engaging with, with those entities as well. Uh, when we're talking about that offshore complex work, um, the Marine Taxonomic Services is the dive company that's doing a lot of that work. Uh, in the Keys and outside of the Keys and, and like uh Lakeward and then uh some of those. Technologies that Jesse has mentioned is an Eco Clean that you may have seen the B Bot. Uh, that the land version, so it's the robot to save Lake Tahoe instead of the league. But uh, yeah, there's a lot of great partners that are uh engaging with, with the partner, becoming a collective of the partnership. And so we're really grateful to have that support and kind of a unified mission to find these solutions.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone. Looks like we're good in the room, so I'm going to go online and I'll go to Ms. Simon first.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just a couple of comments and maybe some questions. I don't know who the appropriate person would be. Um, I think a key point here is that use of herbicides has never been permitted before. So there's probably reasons for that, and I really appreciate all the work everybody has done, but uh just. Hoping that we can build from the lessons learned and the, the uh. Pete's presentation about the seven miracles, it, it's just horrifying to think what might have happened if those miracles didn't occur. And I'm wondering also how the um Tahoe Water Suppliers Association, which favored a non. Um, herbicide approach. Uh, how they're uh monitoring or have you heard anything from them? And um, um, also for probably for TKPOA, um. Do you think of the mitigation efforts are being successful with your homeowners? When I look at the maps, it looks like there's still a lot of lawns, there's still a lot of uh areas that pollutants can get into the lake from those. Um, Marina side homes and how uh again, probably for Pete, how do you, would you address the? Homeowners who are not participating in the mitigation effort? I know that's a lot, but um. It's very, it's a very, very important issue for me.
Yeah, let me give that a try. I'd, I'd say if. If we had not been lucky with the weather and the team had not done a great job on the other four miracles. We would be preparing to start year one of the test. Um, so uh, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we were lucky and, and good and got year one behind us. I'm not sure I can really speak in any depth um. To the uh, the landscape issue. I, I believe that the Keys is committed to a seventy five percent reduction in turf. From what I've seen, which again is limited, I'm not working on that particular project. Um, the, the progress is, is excellent. Um, a big part of the turf is, is common, and so it's easier to keep track of that. I believe we're, you know, twelve, fifteen months into a, a redesign plan that looks like it's going to be. Um, you know, just fantastic and no question it'll achieve that seventy five percent objective. Um, so I, I don't know, does that capture your question?
Yeah, I think so. I think um it's important that we look at. The source as well as the spread of these um noxious plants, invasive plants. So anything that helps those plants to grow, um. You know, th- those mitigation efforts are very, very important.
Yeah, I mentioned briefly that the, the board agreed to fund a kickoff of a, what we hope is a second collaborative effort that would really be aimed at. Uh, other ways to reduce nutrients long term in, in the lagoon to provide a good feedback mechanism or whatever weed control program we develop.
Do you have a timeline for that at all?
Well, we're kicking, I mean, we've kicked off the program this year. We're spending money. Um, you know, we'd probably be talking years out, but the, the goal would be to intersect. Um, with the implementation of a weed control project, you know, in two or four years.
Okay, and then I, I have been monitoring this actually since the beginning from a, and I'm one of the laypeople, so uh I appreciate the presentation and I'm still. Um, hoping that the year two and three will not lead to any uh more herbicides in the lake. Thank you.
And just to follow up on a couple of our other questions, uh. Judith, you had mentioned the Tahoe Water Suppliers Association. They were, they are a member of our stakeholder committee and we've had some meetings this year with that. Uh, with the stakeholder committee to provide the updates on, on year. Uh, one progress and moving forward into year two and uh to. Kind of compliment what Pete mentioned on the turf issue, there is a green infrastructure, it's an RFP that went out, uh. Shane Navarro on our team, uh, at TRPA is, is leading that, so we could provide some more information on what all that entails, but it's looking at a, you know, more of a. Larger landscape scale of stormwater control uh versus uh in, in uh small locations. Uh, and some of the science that we um and monitoring we put into place prior to the test to get those bit, that baseline information I mentioned. Uh, that ninety percent of the nutrients and comes from the weeds themselves, that perpetual. Dying off cycle that happens, so about ten percent is coming from upland sources. So it's much more significant from the weeds themselves, but uh that ten percent is still something we can address, and so we're looking at opportunities to do that.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add one more thing to give credit where credit's due, um, the Tahoe Water Suppliers Association were ones that actually. Asked some of the questions and had some of the ideas around a bubble curtain as a tool, around laminar fluoration as a tool. Uh, and when I was working with them in previous stakeholder groups, I think they were on to something and that was why we, we kind of pursued those prior to this control methods test, so. Um, the league has been very engaged with the water suppliers throughout, um, as we have very similar missions in protecting water quality. But it's, it's been a very useful collaboration and they continue to be a valuable partner in that discussion.
Thanks Judy for those questions. Uh, Mr. Drake.
Thank you. Um, hey, great presentation. We've had several updates on this. Project over a couple of years, and this was by far the most comprehensive and it was exciting to hear some of the initial results, so. And uh major kudos on the collaboration effort. Um, this is monumental and I, every time I hear about it, I'm reminded how. How monumental this effort is. My question is, are there other examples of highly concentrated contained AIS? Um, you know, efforts like this that you're leaning on for. Um, ideas, guidance, um, or is this pretty novel, what we're doing here? I, I know that we're getting the word out, you, you are getting the word out about what is going on in Tahoe to other areas. I'm curious if. There were other regions, other places that you were leaning on for structuring the study and, and the implementation.
In many ways, we are kind of the pioneers on this approach, uh, looking at a one time use of herbicides. Uh, that's not really been done anywhere else. And so Tahoe's been a proving ground, not only for. That type of test, but also with these innovative techniques with ultraviolet light and some of the tools uh and superheroes that Jesse's introducing. Uh, to some of these uh complementing efforts, so uh we certainly engage with all of our partners at a, at a national level. Uh, because they've used certain methods that we have not in the past. Uh, and so getting, gaining information from them uh as to how to best understand its applications. Dr. Anderson is certainly someone that is super knowledgeable on all that, so having him involved in the project brings a lot of. Uh, a lot of wealth of information uh to be able to implement the test appropriately.
Um, I could, I could just quickly, I'd, I skipped over it in my presentation, but kind of that twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen timeframe. Um, myself and our staff were attending national and international conferences on lake management to, to start ass, asking these questions. Uh, almost everybody we spoke to in those settings, their first question was, are you considering targeted aquatic herbicides? Um, Endothal and others that have been used for decades, and we said, well, well, no, um, not currently, because Tahoe is an outstanding national resource water with certain protections and. We're not looking at them, and they said, well, you should, you know, maybe consider it, because those are the tools that we know work. Uh, and that was part of our evolution to a test, right? We weren't comfortable with a, a full application of full use. We needed to understand. How to apply them, where they went, state and transport, were, were they effective? Um, and we feel this test does that very nicely, but also not just that one tool. We needed other tools, hence the emerging technologies that were brought up. Um, and I will say we are getting a lot of attention, not just on the control approach, um, which I think will be very informative for control, but also in containment. Um, bubble curtains in particular, we were recently contacted by industries that are working on desalinization. Um, as they're having issues with aquatic vegetation on their intakes as they pull in water and they want to use bubble curtains to help prevent. Uh, aquatic vegetation from getting in their intake, so, so people are paying attention to what we're doing here and in all methods, and that's why it's pretty exciting to, to learn and to share what we're doing.
Yeah, I was going to chime in a little bit here too, uh Jesse, the um. You know, from nineteen nineties, uh, and going forward, I've been presenting papers at international conferences. On aqua plant management, um, on the Tahoe situation, so there's been a lot of, a lot of give and take, back and forth discussion on this uh. Problem and in, in some ways it's not unique at all. Now, we've had aquatic plants uh in lakes all over the world. And including the US, of course, and the use of various methods, dredging, even rotor tilling, various methods that have been used under certain circumstances. But I think what's really unique about this project is, is the integration of these methods, but also the UV light is really. It's, it's really fascinating. It's a, it's a, it could be a game changer where you have enough water clarity to use it. Um, a trick is to figure out how to use it most optimally, but I'm pretty encouraged by that. I think it's, it's going to have its limitations, but to me, it's, it's probably the most important new approach. That we've seen probably in, in this area, probably in the last twenty five, thirty years.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add, we have strategic documents that are produced independently, one uh from UNR, our implementation plan. And our control action agenda uh from creative resources strategies that. Uh, discuss needing those multiple tools, but then also identifying that aquatic herbicides at least needed to be considered if we are going to achieve success. And uh, at the time of that implementation plan was developed, UV light wasn't even. Uh, a glimmer in someone's eye yet, so uh we're moving very fast on this innovative approach and, and really encouraged by what we're seeing so far.
Excellent.
Good discussion. Thanks, Kevin. Uh, Mr. Drew?
Good morning, everyone. Um, thank you for the presentation and the update, uh, very useful information. Couple of questions. Uh, the first one is, in the mapping where you were showing the differences between the varying treatments that occurred in year one. Um, we had Endothal in some areas, other herbicides in another, and then the UV or, or other treatments. Was there a physical barrier within those sections of the lagoon that separated where one? Uh, treatment occurred uh when it was adjacent to another, or was it just um? The, the only barrier was at the, the west lagoon?
Yeah, we, the, within the, behind the barrier curtains, those um subdivisions or subsites were not separated physically. They were sep- they were separated by distance, but not by curtains. Um, and so with, we are, could tell where things went because of all the herbicide sampling. There was some movement of Endothal and some of the other sites at very low levels, but it breaks down so quickly. Uh, that it got below the active levels within a few days, actually. Um, but the UV, the UV light systems were done outside the curtains, so those were not done with any proximity or even connection to any of the herbicide treatments. Um, in the, in year one.
Okay, and then I, I assume the sampling sites that you selected were well within each definitive area, so you didn't have any. Um, sampling sites where there could be some influence of one treatment into another?
Well, the uh, during the herbicide sampling, they actually analyzed for both herbicides everywhere. So it wasn't, and, and so if that's, that's what your question is about, we had sampling sites within the treatments out areas and outside the treatment areas. But every time there was a sample sent in, they analyzed for both herbicides, so we could detect if there was a crossover.
Yeah, ma- maybe my question wasn't very clear. Uh, so when you were using your rakes to sample the aftermath of treatment. I'm assuming those rake locations were well within where only say Endothal was used versus where another herbicide was used.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the, uh, what they, what they did was they, they, every two weeks, thirty sample, thirty rake samples were taken from each separate site. And so that's the, how, how that data was collected, and they knew, you know, everything is GPS located, so they know where they are in the sites. And then they were directly sampled in those sites, including the control sites, which were outside the curtains, which had no treatments whatsoever.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, it, it's certainly, in, without seeing the numbers, just based on your summary, it seems like the, the Endothal had. Substantially higher desired outcomes compared to the other herbicides used.
Yeah, it's broader, it's a broader spectrum herbicide, it, it control all three. Um. And you, and it's a good question, because the, the advantage of the tricloprir would be that you potentially get a much longer control of your original water milfoil. And we may see that, we may find out that we've got multiple year control with that, because the way it moves into the roots and rhizomes of the plants. And actually, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's a longer term approach, but clearly we have some disadvantages with tricloprir with the breakdown.
And then the last question was, um, you know, we've stated that, that the idea of the, the one time use of, of herbicides. I, I'm assuming that. When we're done with the, the three years of testing and whatever post-test monitoring is done to ultimately select what should be the long term management approach. For the Keys. If a herbicide is selected, it's not going to be a, a, a one time use only for the task. If that becomes a part of the desired treatment long term for the lagoons. I would assume it'll be more than a one time application of that herbicide as a part of the overall treatment plan.
Yeah, I think it's a little early to know what we would, what winds up after three years, and I think Jesse's point is this three year project, let's see how it turns out. Um, I wouldn't want to predict what, what would be the application if, if at all. And I think that's, that's a question we'll have to, we'll have to decide now when we got the, the data from three years. Um, but keep in mind too, the other reality about herbicides in general is that there are new ones being produced all the time. I shouldn't say all the time periodically, there is one out there we were hoping to use in the CMT test, but it was not approved in California, it's approved federally. It's been used in Washington State and all around, and it has some uh attributes that are really much better. It's got hour, hours of. Um, degradation time, not days or weeks. And they're very selective on, on milfoil and some of the other ones, so you know, it, there's some potential out there, but I think it's a little early to make, you know. Um, projections about what we'll, we'll wind up with the, with the best approach.
And so the, the one time, that's really related to it'll be used one time during this three year testing project?
Right.
Okay.
Sure only, right, right.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Uh, how about Ms. Chandler?
Hello, how are you? Uh, I just want to make a quick comment. Um, as a resident of Tahoe Keys, and I've been on the Water Quality Committee since uh two thousand and fifteen. Um, I just really have to give kudos to all the people that were involved in this project, particularly Pete, Lars, Dennis. Uh, it was incredibly professional back in two thousand and sixteen, when we first started talking about it, it seemed like it would never happen. And then the fact that it was able to come together so quickly was just amazing. Uh, the team was highly professional, it was excellent, they had a great scientific process. And they came up with data that's going to be useful for not only all of Lake Tahoe, but for our country. And we should be really proud of what was accomplished, and uh I look forward to years two and three. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. How about Ms. Jacobson?
Yes, good morning. Thank you. I don't have a question, I just uh wanted to comment, uh, say thanks for the presentation. It's. It's su- super impressive and really, really exciting. So I appreciate um the presence of this one, and I think this one's definitely much more comprehensive than the ones we've seen in the past, but um it was, it was fantastic. Thank you.
Agreed, thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands. I just had a couple of quick thoughts too. Um, there was nothing requiring the Keys property owners to contribute to this financially, is that right? They just
This is their project. They are the project opponent and applicant.
Okay, yes. So they did, obviously then they did have a vested interest to go for this.
Absolutely.
And to, I was just encouraged to see, even though so many of them were shut out from their boating summer. Um, I was really encouraged to see Pete's numbers on, you know, four to one support or continuing. So that's amazing. Um, and I was kind of thinking in my mind, did the ones that were able to use their boats on the east side vote more favorably is, are you know, will, will there be like more of a spread um to the other? Will there be any redistribution of who gets to boat this summer or things like that?
There won't be any boating restrictions this year. The curtains were in place solely for herbicide. Uh, preventing any spread outside of those treatment areas and that they had to be maintained until we reach those non-detex that uh uh Lars and Pete mentioned. So no boating impacts other than maybe some traffic for the monitoring and UV boat. But there won't be any restrictions as far as access.
Okay, this summer's back to normal.
More or less.
Okay, so it's yeah, I'm sure you're thinking about how that affects all your testing and the controls and some complication there for sure, but um real, real world conditions will reapply here.
Yeah, after this coming season and as we get into year three, we'll start having more information to give us a little bit more understanding on how we can start preparing for the long term, but it, as Lars pointed out, it's still a little premature.
Mm-hmm, and then uh, I, I was just gonna add that I don't think it's been brought up, but the amount of variability within the Keys Lagoons themselves is vast. So like a treatment you would use in one portion of the lagoon, you may not use in another. Hence why we, you know, because the, the conditions are so different. Um, so we're looking at that too. Um, and so it, the complexity, le- levels of complexity are, are pretty high. But that's why a three-year test we felt was, was important to kind of see over time. And you know, nature, I guess, threw a curve ball for implementation, but gave us the variability that is useful in, in designing a test. It's a multi-year application. Because we're not gonna get the same environmental conditions every year. We need to know how to do this in all conditions.
And that's one of the reasons why we have the replicates also. So you have multiple sites looking at the same implementation approaches uh to be able to compare and contrast because of that variability Jesse mentioned.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's pretty fascinating, especially really high lake level coming this year and um, so just a question on once the three years is up and we hopefully hone in on some strategy. Um, depending on what that strategy is, it sounds like either more environmental analysis may need to happen or maybe not, if you're not gonna use herbicides, to things like just going for UV and bubble curtains, et cetera, and robots. Does that, does that require more environmental analysis, do you think, in the future?
Yeah, that's something I failed to mention. So uh, thank you for bringing that up uh in, in the summary that whatever approach is going to be identified or uh proposed for the long term, it will require a significant and robust environmental analysis, even with UV, there's concerns that uh the EIS uh identified, not only because of its uh non-selective nature, but any temperature issues or rapid die-off that uh allows nutrients to be released. So there will be a significant environmental analysis for the long-term solution, regardless of what approach is used.
Okay. Um, and then my last question is, ha- have you expanded or have other um marinas latched on to any of these ideas and are they beginning to implement them, say like in Tahoe City or uh, is that already happening or are they waiting?
Uh, as far as control options, who we've had a lot of good success having localized eradication. Uh, fortunately Tahoe City is one of the cleanest marinas that we have with uh no invasive weeds. Uh, but there are locations that have uh installed bubble curtains to prevent either something coming in or leaving. So Lakeside Marina and Elk Point Marina is a small homeowner marina on the Nevada side, both have uh bubble curtains now with uh support from uh the Lakeside Property Owners and uh for their unit. And then uh at Elk Point, TRPA, the League and Tahoe Fund help support uh an installation there. And so, and Lamina Flow was actually first implemented at Ski Run Marina. So people are looking at what's happening, not just within the Keys, but just from a program uh overall to be able to identify solutions in their particular locations.
That's great, yeah. Start, start now elsewhere. Um, that's awesome. Um, great discussion. Are there any final thoughts before we go to the public? Think we're good. Okay, let's move on to public comment on this item. So again, to participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov in the calendar, click on APC Meeting, June fourteen, twenty twenty-three. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. And if any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission, please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. Uh, doesn't look like we have any in the room, so Catherine, over to you for Zoom.
Uh, Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised to comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I believe we are good. This was an informational-only item. And it sounds like there's a lot more to come. So thank you so much for uh, that really was the most comprehensive uh presentation I've ever seen on this. So that was pretty fascinating. And thank you all, uh, including uh, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Walcott for informing us and inviting our discussion. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah.
Be, before we leave that, Mr. Chair, um, does I did, was able to monitor the presentation that uh the group made before the TRPA. And I'm thinking that you said at that presentation that the slides are available, I think, at the TKPOA website. Is that true?
The webinar and the governing board presentations are available. Uh, I can coordinate with Tracy and others here to make that available to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
I'll send out a link, Judy.
Perfect.
Thanks, Tracy.
Welcome.
All right, great. Enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you. And let's move on to item six, which are reports. And I'm gonna go first to Mr. Hester for the Executive Director port report, including Tahoe in brief and the governing board monthly report. Information on this can be found on page thirty-one of your packets. And you'll also cover upcoming topics. Mr. Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, double bubble always meant a chewing gum to me when I was a kid. Now, now now I'll never think of that term the same way. Anyway, uh, I wanted to give you an update on some of the past items that you heard, as you requested. On the Washoe County's Tahoe Area Plan Project that is going to the board this month. Both your body and the Regional Plan Implementation Committee brought up the issue of inclusionary housing and mixed-use definition. So we'll be addressing that with um implement or mitigation measures attached to their plan amendment. So those will, those issues you brought up will be addressed. Achievable definition, which you heard, uh, was approved by the governing board. A couple of logistic items, logistics items, um. The August date for the APC meeting is the same as the summit. So um, it's very likely we will cancel the August APC meeting. Um, we have, I think we're about six months late on planning one oh two. We've been to keep, keep moving that back, uh, because different people have different uh conflicts. So uh, that will probably now be moved to September. Uh, Tracy offered to try to find a different time, but I think given that there's the size of this body, we'll probably just try to move to September unless you want us to try to find a time. Um, so those are the, the items uh you've heard and what's coming up. Uh, next month, I think we'll have a regularly scheduled meeting. Um, but um no any reason to cancel it at this point. Uh, I'm not gonna go into the Tahoe and brief report on page thirty-one of your packet. But I would like to spend some time, uh, if you'd like me to, on the um governing board retreat. The number of you uh asked for more detail on that than just what are the priorities. I know there's some issues like parking and so forth, so if you are up for it, I've got about a twenty or thirty minute presentation. Retreat, yeah. It'll be pretty much the presentation the board got.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Tashara likes it. How's everyone feeling? No objections?
Okay, good.
We're, we're good.
I know I'm standing between you and lunch. Well, actually, Mr. Marshall will be.
Yes, we might. Yeah, we'll push Mr. Marshall to me.
So I'm eating into his open meeting a lot of times. So uh basically, uh, we put this together. There was a team internally, Dan Seagan, Michelle, uh, Glickard and myself. We ran it through our staff, had about twenty-five people on the team and uh we took it to our retreat that Kalen uh McGee facilitated. So this this was part of the all-day retreat. The board had asked for an environmental scan and our recommendation. So this came after a review of where we've been since two thousand and twelve on the regional plan. And that is in your packet. There's a link you can click. Um, and then I'll just take you through the presentation here. The rest of the board retreat uh was generally breaking out into groups and looking at these and giving us some feedback. Uh, so I'll just start with the next slide, Tracy. So the board asked for at their retreat last May, a, a year ago, a little over a year ago, for us to prepare an environmental scan for them to have uh as part of their priority setting retreat, this one that we just had. Next slide. So what is an environmental scan? Um you probably have run across this term in different work you've done in your different organizations, but really, we're looking for an internal and external trends to help us talk about what strategies we need to pursue. Uh, for us, it fits into kind of an annual cycle, annual um adaptive management cycle. We do the scan, we have the workshop, which I'm gonna go through in a second, identify initiatives or strategic priorities, work on those, report on those, and then do the environmental scan again. So that's kind of what I'm talking about. The first thing, next slide. The first thing we look at in kind of defining the scope is what are mandates? Because you could go all over the place if you didn't have any sideboard. So as you know, TRPA has this compact, by-state compact. And it has four parts, achieve and maintain thresholds. Implement the uh, prepare a plan and code, implement that through permitting and implement that through the EIP and transportation improvement programs. We also are the Water Quality Management Planning Agency designated by that. Uh, that designation comes from the Clean Water Act and partner with, and the EP and law to make sure that gets done. And we're also the designated the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Regional Transportation Planning. So our board actually adds one member and votes as the MPO board on the transportation plan. So we tried to weave in, make sure we weave in water quality and regional transportation planning. When we look at this, not just our compact mandates. Next slide. So looking at trends, uh, one of the uh, things there's been a lot of people talking about, but the, we thought it would be important to lay out the facts. The facts are that uh the popu- since two thousand, since two thousand, population in the region has dropped. Employment has dropped. Both of those have dropped. You can see the numbers here. Both of those have dropped about eleven percent. So a lot of people either, well, I don't think have twenty-three-year memories or are new, but we actually have less population and less employment than we did twenty years ago. Next slide. People also talk about, well, there's more development. There really isn't more development. There's always been uh, a development rights cap. Uh, so this tells you a little bit about some of the development rights trends. You can see that um actually from two thousand and twelve till now, uh, we have gone down a little bit in commercial space and down a little bit in hotel rooms or tourist accommodation units. Gone up a little bit in residential units. That's actually what the regional plan, EIS and mitigation measures directed we should do is we should look at our development rights system and allow switches between uh tourist accommodation units and commercial square footage to residential to help with affordable housing issues. So in a way, that's a success. Uh, next slide. But in terms of housing, there's a much bigger issue, which I'm sure you all are aware of, and that's the cost. Uh, you can, to summarize this slide, basically in uh, two thousand and twelve, which was the second bar there, right after the recession. The uh, housing costs six times uh the household income. It's now at thirteen times. So our housing is even significantly less affordable. When I was uh learning about housing planning back in the double bubble chewing gum days, um you tried to get about a, a ratio of three times the income or four times, three and a half, four times. So we're at thirteen. So definitely a affordability issue. Next slide. We also um looked at uh visitation and travel trends. You know, part, part of what's gone on, I won't go through every one of these, but um part of what's gone on, we think is although the population and employment have gone down, uh, people are, we've still got a lot of visitors, but they're not going to the same places they used to. So you can look at airport. It's not quite where it was before COVID, but it's coming back and their, your airport, by the airport, I mean Reno Tahoe International. They have a billion-dollar capital improvements program they've started. Uh, their, if you look at their projections, they're expecting to go well beyond where they were previously. Uh, visitation, paid visitation has dropped. It's still not back to two thousand and nineteen before COVID. But uh, it's an even longer, if you look at it longer term, it's much lower than two thousand. So that's paid visitation, not total visitation. If you look at vehicle miles traveled, they're lower than they have been since two thousand and sixteen. Uh, entries and exits uh up on the Nevada side. Um, they didn't, they haven't fallen since two thousand and twenty and actually were the highest record on year in two thousand and twenty-one. And congestion is measured by travel time is at the two thousand and fifteen level. So we're seeing a little different trends. Um, next slide. And we think again, that's about visitation. So this, I don't know how well you can see this map, but this shows visitation seasonally. Um, so state line counts are twenty percent lower than they were in two thousand. So again, that adds to the conclusion that a lot of our visitors are not coming now just to go to the hotel casinos. Um, overall, we haven't seen big increases since, because partly because of COVID, but uh given that Sacramento, Reno, the other areas have a twenty percent projected, over twenty percent projected growth rate. We think uh looking deeper at this data and looking at, at longer term where we're going, we think that leads us to talking about transportation and visitation management from the visitor, visitor's perspective to these destinations. Not, not necessarily the communities, but the destinations like Sand Harbor and Emerald Bay and places like that. Um, so we're gonna have to talk about how we handle those peak events. And we handle those sites, things like parking. I'll get into that in a little bit. The next slide, we also uh talked about what's going on in the natural environment. Everybody knows climate change is, is happening and um we've all, we're, we've been working and will continue to work on uh resiliency strategies. You know, we, we had I think the biggest, I, I don't know if there's a bigger snow year on record than the one we just had. Maybe there is, but was it? Okay, that was before double bubble for me. So anyway, um and we've also had within the last few years, the lake really low. So we've, what we really are seeing is what we've been told is you need to plan for the extreme. So when it's drought, we've been working with the public safety providers to talk about where are you gonna put the public safety peers? How far out are they gonna go? Um, and when, and forest health, thinning, things like that. Um, so that kind of and then you, and then you's talk about evacuation, you talk about all the, it's really becoming more resilient. It's speeding up the pace and scale of our environmental improvement program and doing resiliency. It's speeding up the pace and scale of our environmental improvement program and doing resiliency projects. Uh, next slide. Uh, couple of other trends we went through with the board, I won't spend a lot of time on them, or. Technology's changing, for those of you who are transportation planning geeks. Um, I, I learned about. Transportation planning when they had these theories like gravity models and you did OD, origin destination studies and trip generation and all this stuff. What's happening right now, we're right in the middle of it is. The same thing that's happened in marketing with big data is we now have companies that. Get cell phone data and they know where most people are at any time and where they're traveling. And they're putting it together with other data, like what are you purchasing, where are you purchasing, so they can figure out your trip purpose. And so. Much like. Algorithms that are being to develop, developed to figure out what you might wanna purchase based on that kind of big data. People are starting to generate new models using algorithms of how the transportation system works. So we're probably. Not this RTP update, but the next one probably gonna be looking at a whole different. Type of technology when we do our planning. So that's one thing that's going on, not to mention. Uh, other technologies like electric vehicles and things like that, so. There's a lot of technology changes coming. Uh, we talked about the public policy climate. I think we're very fortunate here in Tahoe that we have a lot of bipartisan, we haven't gotten. Wrapped up in some of the other things. We also talked about internal trends, our culture, our compensation, those kind of things. I won't get into all that with you. Next slide. So with all those trends, uh, the board. Asked us, what do you recommend that we, our priorities be, so? We recommended four when we went into the retreat, we came out with three. Partly because the board said one of your four should just be integrated into the other ones, which was performance measurement. Changes and threshold update, so, um. This is probably the more interesting part, let me just go through our thought process as staff, what we recommended to board and where we ended up. And you'll see there's lots of work here for the PPC. Uh, so next slide. So. The first thing, uh, we, we looked at was. How do we deal with this housing? You guys saw the numbers on the, the percentage. Um, how do we reduce VMT per capita? You saw the visitation issues there. And doing all that while maintaining our commitment to the environment, particularly water quality. Second thing that we thought we needed to work on is. The recreation sites and the visitation, transportation, safety for visitors, those sort of things, and then climate resiliency. So the focus areas we identified for the board, what we're calling. Or the first one, complete communities, the second one, visitation, the third one, restoration and resiliency, so let me go through those a little bit. Next slide. So, uh, for complete communities, we kind of looked at those three pieces I just talked about. And, um, so I'll go through each one of those and then give you our recommendation on how that fits together. Next slide. So affordable workforce housing, um, as we mentioned earlier. Um, and I showed in that development rights slide. We don't have a lot of the, new development left, in fact, when you look at the numbers, ninety-two percent of. The, the capacity of development rights is built. Three percent is restricted for things like bonus unit pools. So that leaves about five percent for new development, so what we are really talking about is redevelopment. Which is what we talked about in two thousand twelve with the regional plan update is. And when we redevelop. Do it so that it's more environmentally sensitive, so that it recognizes. Uh, the environmental standards and the way you design things. Uh, stormwater systems and so forth that. Just frankly weren't around when a lot of the stuff was built here fifty, sixty years ago. Uh, so one of our, our goal here is to, and I'll show you why in a minute, to incentivize smaller units. On a parcel and allow greater site utilization and address parking. So next slide. So as some of you know, I know. You know, Mister Chair, since you're Chair also of the Tahoe Living Working Group. Um, working on affordable housing. We brought in a, a group called Cascadia. Who they do pro formas, not just for the private sector, public sector, but for the private sector. And we said after, uh, input from the board last July, and input from the working group before that. Don't just tell us, uh, what this policy would do or that policy would do. Stop, step back from a perspective and say, if you needed to get a twelve to fifteen percent return on investment. In other words, if you were the private market. What would you have to do? What would you have to do to our regulations and the way we approach things to make that work? And so they looked at things like. Density, they said that's the number one. Uh, not more units, but just density. Uh, setbacks and, um. Parking requirements, and so. Next slide, please. Here's how they actually quantify that, so this is, this scale. If you look over to the right, you can see under the existing set of. TRPA and local regulations. You can get, build a unit that you can rent for fifty-seven hundred dollars a month. Well, that's not very affordable. You know, frankly. It's two hundred and thirty percent of AMI. So then you start looking at moving to your left. Changing what you can at TRPA level, you move to a hundred and ninety percent, thirty-seven hundred dollars a unit. It's still beyond workforce housing. Affordability. Then you start working with local changes as well as TRPA changes, you can start moving into the workforce level. And, um. You can actually maximize affordability and get to about a little over a hundred twenty percent. So they said, those are the things, if you're serious about this, this is what you need to work on. So changing TRPA and local regulatory. Regulatory barriers. Uh, is one of the ways to address affordable housing, again, that's. Density, height. Parking, which is typically not been a TRPA issue. And it's. When you move to this kind of, this level of development, you no longer can use a. Coverage system designed by the Forest Service to protect forests, you have to. Well, just being candid, you have to do urban stormwater. And so we'll talk about what that looks like. In a minute, but you have to do all that if you wanna maintain the. Uh, air, uh, the environmental quality. So next slide. This is just. Quickly, some of the areas where we're seeing some of this. Type of housing and examples of where we might wanna target it. Next slide. I wanna talk about the transportation system that would have to go with this affordable housing. Um. The strategy, or one of our newest threshold is to reduce VMT per capita. That means mixed uses, that means sidewalks, that means bike paths, trails, parking management. And transit, next slide. So let me start with mixed use. Um. This is not rocket science, but. When we talk about mixed use, it's probably good to show people what we're talking about. When you separate. The basic three types of land uses, work, home and leisure. Far enough apart, you can't get between them without a car. So that has been the traditional development pattern in Tahoe and pretty much all over the US since World War Two. Um, so what we talk about when we're talking about mixed use is putting those back together. Which is what's shown on the right, then you have the ability to walk and bike between uses. Um, so that's next slide. So what does that look like? That looks like. Horizontal mixes of uses, vertical mixes of uses. And most importantly, what it looks like on the right there is that. Besides having that mix of uses. You, you have it designed so that. Those land uses are compatible, you can walk between them, and you have uninterrupted pedestrian connections. Next slide. So here's again, a couple areas where we identified town centers where we could do these kind of things. Next slide. The third component is, um, if you are going to have. That kind of transportation infrastructure and those, those kinds of densities. Um, you're gonna have to have a different way to approach. Water quality, you can't say I'm gonna keep seventy or thirty or whatever the percentage of land. Open to absorb the water and stop erosion, you've got to go to a higher level of stormwater treatment. Um, we all know seventy-two from the TMDO work that seventy-two percent of the fine sediment that gets into the lake is from urban development. So we will, we're, we're committed to that goal to reduce it, so what, what are we advocating here along with this? Changes for this housing and changes in the transportation system is what we call a complete. Or green stormwater infrastructure, so next slide. Um, so what does that look like? That looks like things. In this cartoon here where. You capture the water on site. Uh, you have stormwater planters, storm drains, permeable. Paving, you harvest rainwater, you have green, green roofs, all those kinds of things, plus. You have nearby. But remote infiltration basins that capture the water from things like sidewalks, curbs and gutters and, and lines, so. This kind of. Infrastructure is the same kind of infrastructure you have if you have a pedestrian friendly mixed use development, so. This is what we're talking about. Moving toward in a small. Very small part of the basin. In our town centers. And so that's, that's kind of what we, next slide. Uh, talked about with, um, with the board was. Um, these would be the areas, the high-loading areas where you might do it. Uh, you wouldn't do it all over the basin. And next slide, so, so this is. Next slide kind of shows putting it all together. Wait for the next slide. Oh, that was, that's okay. I'm mixing the next slides in there. So it's, so to us, our first priority was doing this complete communities, planning with. For housing, transportation, stormwater. Uh, so that was our first recommendation on a strategic priority for the board. Frankly, it's pretty much continuation of what the Tahoe Living Working Group is directing. Us to do and what the board is directing us to do. Uh, second area, focus area was visitation. Um, the key components, can it, next slide. Sorry, key components of that are. To, to us. The sites. What do you do with the recreation sites? And then the transportation to and from those, uh, so next slide. I already, I already showed you the, um. Travel, changes in the travel patterns, but, uh. What we really think this needs to, to get to is. How do we work with our partners to protect those areas environmentally, but also make them. Continue the, to make them and even maybe enhance them being a desirable place for visitors. We're not gonna get, say we're getting rid of them, but how can we handle them better? And, and in doing that, you can't really manage those sites without thinking about the transportation system, next slide. So what, some of the things that we've been talking about is, um. And, and the visitors are coming, like I said, from those high-growth areas outside, but also we have visitors from inside, but. Some of the things we need to look at are congestion monitoring, parking capacity. Reservation systems, public and private transit. The ITS, Intelligent Transportation System, so we can do things like. We've already got pieces of it, like when you come up fifty from Carson City, you see a sign that says Sand Harbor Parking Lot. Full, one flashing. That's an intelligent transportation system, we need that. We need that comprehensively. Where it can say this site's full, but that one's available, those kind of things, and they probably need to be. Available to users this way, not by putting signs up all over the basin. Um. And that also helps us, that, that ITS helps us, next slide. Deal with peak times. Next slide, please, Tracy. And it also helps us deal with emergencies, if we have snow emergencies or fires and we need to do evacuation. This is a topic that's come up a number of times, so we're looking at, at, um, those things to, to, to deal with visitation. And transportation plan update, next slide. So we're kind of looking at this, uh. Working on three elements that we have, uh, the transportation plan is an element of the regional plan by the compact, but also the RTP. Is the MPO. Working in recreation planning with partners and. What we need to do, uh, for public service and facilities planning part of our compact. So that's how we plan on, on addressing visitation. And the third area, um, next slide. Is the focus on restoration and resiliency, I think I already talked about, um. Way back, hold on one second, is. This group, as you know, or some of you know, is the group that convenes the Tahoe Living Working Group, and you're the chair, you've got four members. And there's four governing board members and your chair is the chair of that group, so you're intricately involved in that on the transportation side. Um, there are a number of input groups. For the RTP update. It, it ultimately goes through the Tahoe Transportation Commission, which is TTD Board. And comes to the MPO, so that's the avenue that'll take, a lot of that stuff still will come here. This last part. Uh, is pretty much under the purview of the Thai Steering Committee and its subcommittees, which some of you also participate in. But it's those EIP projects. A lot of where that's being driven by are these action plans that we. We see generated periodically out of these groups, this group is able to react a lot more. Uh, I think in some ways quicker than we can and doing amendments to the regional plan or RTP, so. It's, I, I like when I talk about this with Kim, who, Kim Karinger, who's the other deputy director and. Over this side of things is. We really have, have the best of both worlds, cause we have a complementary system, we can do things this way, which is less formal. Don't have to do the EISs all the time and all the stuff we have to do. Uh, but we can also do things through the RTP and the regional plan, so this, on this side, we. Are trying to do things, uh, like. The pier extension project we did with the public safety providers, we didn't go through any IS, we didn't adopt changes in policies. We just said, here it is. It's a framework where we can collaborate regionally, that's what a lot of, of, is happening here is collaborating on these projects. We wanna do them faster, and we wanna do more resiliency, resilient projects. So, next slide. Summary, the prior, these are the three priorities, Tahoe living, keeping Tahoe moving and restoration and resiliency. The other thing that we presented to the board, next slide, with just a little bit of a preview of what's coming up, so, uh. And a lot of this will affect you all as well. Uh, in terms of area plans, we've got Washoe amendments. That I just talked about, going to the governing board. There's some work on housing as well. Lasser has a set of amendments, the Tahoe Basin Area Plan Amendments in process. Uh, Mister Chair, you could speak to whether we're gonna be looking at. More in El Dorado County, either focusing on fall and lead for the rest of the county, we've had those discussions. Uh, South Lake Tahoe has a group of amendments that, that John and his crew have brought forward. And, uh, Douglas County has told us they're, wanna make some amendments to the existing area plan. And they're advocating for completion of the remainder. So we've got a lot of area plan work coming in the next year or so, next slide. We also, working with partners, have a lot of corridor plan work. Uh, eighty-nine, they're working on the trail connection planning. Uh, and working on dynamic paid parking. Some of those kind of things, eighty-nine, twenty-eight, uh, the resort triangle on the North Shore. Um, working with our partners there. Twenty-eight, um, Nevada State Route twenty-eight. Paid parking pilots, trails. Future mobility hub at Spooner. Uh, South Shore, fifty focused on Nevada project improvements. On the Nevada side of fifty. Um, we've seen some things coming out of TTD there recently. Uh, and then the Myers Quarter, there are several things. Uh, being considered out there. Uh, right, roundabout roadway improvements. New ped bike connections, complete street work, maybe a. Inspection station, some things like that, so a lot going on there, uh, next slide. Terms of private projects, uh, we just. Saw the Waldorf Astoria. The, the group that restored the Denver Union Station is coming with a Calleva project. Uh, Kings Beach Center, Lasser County's, uh, looking at that. Um. Looking at the boatworks being completely redeveloped. Homewood, uh, is looking at what they wanna. Regen, get their master plan going again and implement that. Barton Hospital bought the site right down Kingsbury here, for new facilities in the. Hyatt Regency has been purchased, um, in the first phase of waterfront redevelopment, we've seen, we've gotten a demo permit for the water, the. Lakeside of, of Lake Shore Drive, so. A lot of private projects coming forward. Last, next slide, last slide. Uh, I'm not gonna tell you all these, cause this isn't even all of them, but if you look at the EIP tracker, we've got a ton of EIP projects. And, and Transportation Improvement Program projects, so a lot coming at us over the next year, so. I hope that gives you the detail that some of you asked for about what we were gonna talk about at the board retreat, that is what we talked about. The priorities are listed in the staff report. Um, on page, uh, forty. Forty-three. And I've probably given you the longest executive director's report. We've ever had here, so.
I think, I think you did break the record, but it was great.
Good, good. Good, good, good.
Yeah. That was, that was wonderful. Do we, do you want to take a couple of questions, John? Or what do you think is appropriate on that?
If you would like, I, there is one, one thing I want to say about what future logistics is. Um, I mentioned that we'll probably cancel the August meeting. But. We are, have also, uh. Been asked. Partly by Kevin asked Kevin Drake on your group asked about this and some of the board members asked. We're going to have the meeting on the North Shore then two weeks after this, two weeks after August ninth. And Kevin and some of our staff and some Placer staff are working. It'll be at the North Tahoe Event Center are working on a. Post governing board meeting, uh, presentations and walking tour. And, uh, so I would encourage you if. Uh, if you can to put, that would be the twenty-fifth, I believe, twenty-third. Would have been fourteen and nine as your twenty-third. Uh, if you can put that on, I know Kevin, uh, is going to be working hard on that. He has a lot of things he'd like to share on the North Shore and I'm sure he'd like you all to be involved in that as well as, uh, the board members. So. Uh, even though we won't have a meeting, we will have, uh, the A P C invited to do that in our short tour. I forgot to mention that. I'd be happy to now answer any questions you have about the presentation or any of this other stuff.
Great. Thank you so much, John. Maybe Kevin, when you give your update, you can just brief us on that walking tour date quickly. So we all have that. Um.
I just said, yeah, Steve, two quick comments. I know, I know we're approaching the noon hour, but thank you, John. It was a great presentation. Much appreciated. There seems to be, or is there a crossover between the destination stewardship plan and what you described there as the visitation plan? Because the elements are the same. So I didn't know. I know the destination stewardship plan is not quite out yet, but I'm hoping that there is some synergy there.
Yeah, we want to, we don't want to duplicate. We want to complement. So, um, you know, to, I think. I kind of, I don't know how well I articulated it, but there's. There's the formal plans we have to do like the R T P and there's the collaboration that goes on regionally, like the destination stewardship plan. Uh, I, I think it's going to be nice to take some of the things out of the destination stewardship plan that need to go into the R T P. To go into the R T P, but they both can complement each other.
Okay, I appreciate that. On the, on the data side. Do we know, like you said, you indicated that there's, you know, there's an increase in traffic coming into the basin from the Nevada side. I, I suspect that that's also because the, the growth that's happening, but. You know, I travel twenty-eight Nevada a lot and, uh, and I know it's happening on other ins and outs of the basin, but. Because we have less employment, because there's fewer businesses that are now outside and coming into the basin to serve clients and customers. Do we know the difference between, you know, trucks that are coming in or vehicles that are coming in to do that? Versus what the visitation, you know, people going to recreation sites would be?
Well, what I will tell you is I tried to get staff to give me some sound lights like that. And what they told me was. You know, with, with COVID and with the people, more people doing remote work, which they don't know if they're going to continue to do that or move back to where they were. With gaming. You know, having not the draw, national draw that it did. Uh, there are so many variables that are changing. They can't really tell exactly what's going on. But hopefully with some of the new data that I talked about, we'll be able to figure that out.
I, I suspected that was the answer, but I just, you know, there's a lot of people you see on twenty-eight, you know, are coming from Carson. You know, and the Carson Valley up to work on the North Shore or to provide, you know, material, building material, whatever it is. Businesses, some of which used to be in the basin and now they're not. So anyway, and then the, the final thing, you know, to further complicate the housing complication. Uh, now people are facing, you know, doubling or whatever of their property insurance. We just had another big insurance company in California say we're not writing any more policies. I know where my partner and I live, you know, our, our property insurance is going to double. And I suspect, you know, we're fortunate enough that we'll be able to figure out, you know, a bake sale or something to afford it, but. I, I suspect a lot of people won't be able to, and that's going to be further pressure on housing. So I'm not sure how to deal with that, but.
I don't know either. I asked some, uh, another person I know who lives in Truckee. Uh, what are you doing about it? And, um. You know, because if you don't have insurance, you can't get a mortgage.
Right.
And, um, or maybe you can, but who would want to borrow money from somebody who give you money if you don't have insurance? But anyway, probably get it from Guido. But, um. You know, they didn't have a good answer. I guess there's some basic insurance that the state.
California Fair Plan.
Yeah, but I don't know that it's optimal. So, yeah, it's expensive.
Anyway, just, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer, but yeah, we're aware of that. It's just another. You know, piling on.
Right. Yep. Piling on.
I mean, and I, I can tell you our discussions. At the staff level, you know, you can only go so far with the stuff I talked about, which is, you know, density and, and those sort of things. There's probably going to have to be some subsidy on the other side. So if we want somebody to come in, do market in, in the market to provide housing. And we push all those. Changes that we talked about. We may have to. Get talk, and we talked to the folks at C T C. Do you have some land maybe that we could add to the? The pro, reduce that, take that out of the performer of the C T C has land, or could we get some clean water grants to build some stormwater infrastructure? So the developer wouldn't have to.
Right.
So we're going to have to. Start bringing that kind of stuff to bear as well as changing the regulations. It's, it's a really tough problem. You know.
Well, thanks for the presentation. Appreciate your responses to my inquiry.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, thank you, Steve and John. Um, Garth.
Thanks, John, for your, for your presentation. It's great. Um, and, and I do like this sort of future direction that everything seems to be moving. A question that I have for you. Um, you know, knowing that on the governing board, there's no U S, uh, Forest Service representative and. It's been white some time since there's been a Forest Service representative here on the A P C. What sort of conversations has the T R P A been having with the Forest Service? Because. I mean, they're the largest landowner and, uh, of course, you know, a lot of the recreational opportunities that are provided, uh, here in the basin fall under their jurisdiction. Is there, has there been any discussion as to why they're not on the A P C? Don't that, that seat is remaining vacant and. Um, I mean, really, we need their buy-in and their cooperation. Um, and I'm just kind of wondering why that's absent.
I can, I can follow up on that. If you see, um, but I can tell you that we have the best communication I've seen since I've been here with Eric Walker. Uh, we meet with him. We have a regular once a month meeting with him. He's the co-chair of the Thai Steering Committee with Julie Reagan. Um, and we work a lot with them on E I P projects. Um, so we. We have a lot of coordination over on the E I P and transportation improvement. Side and we have an M O, M O U with them. We give them a lot of permitting authority. So I'll, I'll follow up and see about getting their A P C rep. But, uh, we do, we do have a lot of coordination with them.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. And I'm, I'm sure you do. I just, I think that with, with moving forward, it would be really important to have the representation here. Um, just to, you, just for the optics even, I mean, just, you know, for the public to know that everyone's cooperating with each other. Um, because not everybody is familiar with M O Us and all the other committees and things that happen. So I, I, I think it's a, an important component.
Yep. We'll talk with Eric about that.
Yeah, good point, Garth.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
Mike, yeah, and I know Eric's, Eric's also on the governing board when we're the M P O, but he's really busy. So. Uh, unless we have a big M P O item, he's usually not here. But we'll talk to him. We'll talk to him.
Okay, thank you. Um, John.
Wait. Uh, thanks on the presentation. I just want to applaud T R P A for taking complete communities into consideration. I mean, obviously the eighty-seven regional plan, your focus was on reversing the degradation in the environment, but. And you guys have been very successful and we've come a long way, but, um, I think the, as we move forward here. Trying to, you know, take the community into consideration, you know, making sure our rules, regulations, edible across, across the board, I think is really important. And we're in order to reverse the trend and that we saw in, you know, the. The loss of population in the basin. I mean, I think it's really important that people should be able to live. Work and play in the base and not have to come off, come up from Minden or Garden.
Absolutely. And for those who don't know, John spent some time in this organization and helped with some of those. Good, good plans that are, we're trying to implement. I'm trying to give you credit, not, not blame. And, uh. They, they've been a great partner. The city's been a great partner and, um. At the last Regional Plan Implementation Committee meeting, they did a presentation of amendments. We did presented this stuff and, and, uh, there. A lot of complimentary work going on there, um, and, and Placer too, is doing a lot of good work. I know. Yeah, that was not a. Nudge, but.
Yeah, we're, we're.
You feel nudge.
We're getting, we're, yeah, we, we may be the fifty-first state. Hopefully not. Um. Good. Uh, Jennifer, or sorry, Drew, let's go to you and then Mister Drake.
John knows, uh, some fascinating information and data. Uh, thanks for sharing. Um, for those that have been involved with. E I P implementation or trying to achieve the thresholds over the years. Um, have often run into the issue of, um. The, the funding regulations and the funding guidelines that have basically eliminated the ability to. Achieve some of the things that you presented. Um, there's been very little movement over the years in the funding sources coming to Tahoe and the limitations related to those funding sources. Um, and, and what I mean by that is you have water quality funding. They can't pay for anything but water quality. You have transportation funding. You can't pay for anything but for transportation. But these integrated projects that lead to complete streets or complete communities. You just can't plan, design and implement projects that way. It just, it, you, you can't make all the puzzle pieces fit together. I know there has been discussions over time. There have been, you know, pressure put on, um, state and federal elected officials to. Loosen up and make funding more flexible. How are you feeling in terms of where we're at with, with creating funding sources that are going to be flexible enough to allow us to implement the projects as you described in your presentation?
I'm more optimistic now than I've been since I, the eleven years I've been here. Um, Shane Navarro is working with the Stormwater Manager from the city of South Lake Tahoe on. A complete street and stormwater project, um. I'm trying to remember the extent of that project, John, maybe John Hitchcock knows. I, I know it's on state line, but I don't know.
I'm aware of the state line project.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, um. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Mountain Lake. Yeah, um, that, that one. Um, I know some of the end dot projects. Or Caltrans projects have included water quality components. Um, and we have applied for a, a hit grant. It's called High Impact Transformation Grant. With partners, the city, uh, is one to try to address this stuff more holistically as well as involve. Uh, people who are so busy with two or three jobs. Uh, that they don't even have time to participate. Try to reach out to those folks who are the workforce people getting pushed out of here. Um, so we're trying to do that. We're working toward that. Jason, uh, are we where I'd like to be? I don't think so, but I think we're moving in the right direction. And I think some of the funders see that you can't keep things siloed and make the difference they want to make.
That's, that's good to hear, John. Yeah. Cause I, I think there's been. Probably for the better part of fifteen or twenty years, there's been a pretty solid understanding on the part of. The, the different folks working on these projects and in areas, what needs to happen. Oftentimes you can come up with a really good plan, but then you just can't piece the funding together. So I think if we can keep that pressure on, especially at the state and federal level about. Needing to have more flexibility. In the way that funding is applied and the way that regulations, uh, related to that funding, um. Are applied, that will go a long way to helping us achieve these more complete integrated projects.
Yeah, one of the, um, to give you a specific, I agree with you. To give you a specific. We put into our, uh, high impact transfer. Our hit grant. That we want to come up with design standards for this or this green stormwater infrastructure and. Working with the local governments and their public works departments to do that. Um, that doesn't mean there's any projects that are funded as a result of coming up with those standards, but at least we'll have something. That fits Tahoe, uh, that works with. That's been designed with this housing and transportation objectives in mind. So, uh, again, I'm optimistic.
Yeah, it's a great point, Jason. Um, Kevin, over to you.
Thanks, Brennan. John, great presentation. That, um, and I. Was going to ask if you could provide it, but I found it on the website. So it's a good recap of the last decade or so, um, of demographic and. Economic shifts in Tahoe, among other things. Um, my question is really just what comes out of a governing board retreat in terms of kind of next steps, action plan? Um, I'm strategically, I think it's a, those are, those are the three important focus areas. Where do we go from here? Cause it sounds like. It sounds very familiar. Um, so what, what are the next steps and? Um, I'm, I'm thinking specifically about things like code changes that are going to be required to support some of those strategic areas.
Uh, the next steps, next step like. Not this month, but next month, we will take a work plan to the board that has all this in it. Um, including how many staff are assigned to each thing. We are, um. In, including in that code amendment work for each one of the initiatives, each one of the priorities. Um. Some of it, we're actually. Moving on right now before the work plan is adopted. For example, I mentioned earlier, the Washoe County Tahoe Area Plan. Um, needing to talk about what mixed use looks like and needing to talk about inclusionary. Um, the R P I C asked us to. Come up with something like that to put in as mitigation measures. But our thinking really is those mitigation measures are the pilot of what the code will look like regionally. So that's one example, but so we already are starting or continuing work on some of them. Some of them, um. Will, like the Tahoe Living Working Group, uh, is going to be looking at code changes. Uh, things on things like density and, and we're going to be, if we get the grant, which I think we will, we're going to, uh. Be letting contracts for stormwatered system design. One of the areas, Kevin, I know you're interested in that we really probably are more formative about is. What are we going to do about parking? I know, um, South Lake Tahoe and Placer are talking about parking management. But I also know that we need to look at it regionally, or we're just going to be pushing the problem from one jurisdiction to another. So. That's something we'll need to talk more about at the policy level. Uh, that's kind of an all over the place scattered answer, but. I hope that gives you a sense of, you know, maybe we could sit down one-on-one and talk about specifics if you want, but we're working on a lot of it. A lot of it will be in the work plan. Some of it will be funded with the, the grant, we hope.
Yeah, gotcha. You know, the work plan was kind of where I was hoping that was going. That makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, thanks, Kevin. Ms. Jacobson.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, John, for the presentation. That was excellent. Um, and thanks Tracy for putting it in the chat. Um, I just, yeah, we, I, the data is really good to. You know, to message on, and I just wanted to point out, we, um. I think you shared some of this data with us already, um, and we prepared a presentation that went to our board. Um, actually Julie was there, I think it was in April. And messaged on a lot of the same, um, trends and, um, you know, we weren't strategic, we weren't doing a strategic planning session with the board, but. Um, we did message on these trends and it's pretty fascinating. I think for us, you know, what I, what I'd like to look for moving forward is what it, what are the, um, what are some of the data? Sets for the COVID period, right? For that. I mean, we've got a lot of data up to twenty twenty-one or so, but like what is, you know, what's been happening since then, particularly on the traffic side? With B M T. Um, I know a lot of folks here, uh, in the North Shore are curious about that, but insane with population, like trying to kind of. Look at what population has done, um, since, you know, census, census, really. But anyway, great presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will say that, um, our research and analysis group. Just got, I want to say within the last month, some final twenty twenty census numbers. So we can generate two thousand, two thousand, ten, twenty, twenty, maybe nineteen ninety trends. So. Ken Casman's working on that. I'll, I'll ask him to get that report out to everybody. But we, like you, Crystal, we, we, we want to see. When the dust settles, what, where are we? Yeah, given we've gone through COVID and all this, the stuff that we've gone through. And if you have some. Yeah, given we've gone through COVID and all this, the stuff that we've gone through. And if you have some information you'd like to share with the A P C. Happy to distribute it for you.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I think, I think we were sharing data when we were putting our presentation together. So I think a lot of what we have is. Is what, what you show here in this presentation, but in terms of any new data, definitely, if we have anything um to share, I'll let you know. But yeah, we're doing the same thing, trying to pull uh kind of update numbers where we can, cuz that was some comments that we, you know, had received from. Members of the public, so.
Agreed. Thank you.
Great. Uh, any final thoughts for John? I don't see any other hands.
I promise next month's executive director report will be much shorter.
No, I think that was great. I mean, it really was. Um, okay, so let's move on uh to Mr. Marshall for general council status report and. Um, it sounds like due to timing, we're sitting at twelve oh four and there's a meeting in this room, local government and housing at one. And I know folks need a break and we need to do a room changeover, so I think. I'm gonna recommend we postpone the review of compact open meeting law conflict of resol- conflict of interest requirements presentation. It looks like. There's a number of slides and I, I'd hate to rush you through that. So if you concur with that, uh, maybe we postpone that to July.
Uh, I can, I concur.
Excellent.
And suggest that we postpone it otherwise, well. It won't be particularly useful to you if I just try to run through it as fast as possible. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I would want to just point out a couple of things on um. Just legal report. There is litigation pending against uh the Mahotten Water Board, I think the State Water Board. Uh, on the Tahoe Keys project and the approval of the C M T. Um, it's, you know. Proceeding very slowly, I think they're about, or they have, have or about, filed the administrative record. Um, they were, you know, the, the big issue is whether or not the use of. Um, herbicides is consistent with the basin plan, the California La Honton Basin Plan.
Who is they, John?
They, they meaning, yeah. Playing it, yeah. Sorry. Um, and uh, so that's gonna creep along, um, and we'll see how that. Might influence the ultimate. Path forward. There'll be monitoring associated with the lawsuit, I'm sure. Uh, okay, that's it.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? So we'll plan to hear that in July, assuming we're gonna have a meeting in July since we won't in August because as Tracy just put in the chat. Um, the federal summit is scheduled August ninth, tentatively in Kings Beach. It's not official yet. Tracy says it's unofficial. Okay, excellent.
Not, not for a report. There is someone who has, in member of the public who has their hand raised. As a result of the executive director report, if you want to take that, you can, or they can, we can take that comment at the end here with. Our final public comment period.
Let's take it at the end with, with the final public comment period. Thank you for that. Yeah, we typically don't do comments on reports, public comments. So let's go to. Uh, A P C member reports. If you have something relevant, we would love to hear it and I'm gonna go in the room first. So Mr. Hitchcock.
Um, Sugar Pines, Broken Ground, uh, starting site work and then the first modular unit actually arrived yesterday.
Wow.
And so uh, the project's happening.
Fantastic.
Are they flatbed or are they? The full, the full, uh, they.
The modular units?
Yeah.
It's um.
I mean, are they folded down where they, and then part of your construction process is to.
Well, they stack them. No, there's actually, they're um, like, breaking modular units and then they just start stacking them up once they get the foundation in the ground.
Right.
But you swing by, it's uh, it's on the. It's next to our office.
It's like the trucky.
Yeah.
It is factory O S is the maker of both.
Yeah.
And they make it as big as they can without, so they can put it on a truck without having to close the highway.
Thanks, John. Mr. Alling.
Uh, nothing at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Garth. Steve.
Uh, my understanding, Mr. Chairman and others is that John Hitchcock may be able to confirm this, but I think that Caltrans is doing a public hearing at next Tuesday's council meeting. Where they're once again proposing to increase speed on sections of Highway fifty.
Our proposal to increase speed.
Yeah. So, you know, when they did this a couple of years ago, a lot of us challenged the methodology that they use. It's very old school. And I think one of the areas that they're proposing to increase the speed is exactly where they're proposing safety improvements. For pedestrians. So, you know, it makes no sense. And I, on, on behalf of the chamber. Uh, we'll be making some comments in, in opposition to what they're proposing. I don't know if the agency, I don't think it's consistent with Vision Zero, which we heard about last month. So, you know, this is again, some, somebody zooming out, you know, completely uh opposed, something that I think is, is. Exactly the opposite of what we want to do at Tahoe. So, um, I'm not necessarily convinced that Caltrans is gonna change their ways by next Tuesday, but. Uh, we're certainly gonna register our concern.
I think Michelle Glickard on our staff is preparing a response.
Good. Thank you.
Agreed. I saw that. Thanks, Steve. Vice Chair Carr.
Uh, thank you. On just one sort of commission editorial comment, um, I, I'm, I'm, we're, we're out of the winter season. Um, unfortunately, I missed last month's meeting, but now that I'm back, um. At this meeting here physically in person, it's really, really nice to see everybody and have that face to face um interaction. So I would just encourage the folks that um are online to uh consider coming in person to a future meeting. Um, it definitely feels different, makes a difference. And uh, it'd be nice to see your smiling faces here in the room again as well. Thanks.
Agreed. It is nice. They have coffee and tea and comfortable chairs. Um, great. Uh, how about Ms. Jacobson?
Yeah, I just have um one thing I wanted to report out, out on um is that we have started to develop a parking management program. Um, in the basin, I think John touched on that. Um, and we had two workshops that have been scheduled. Uh, that occurred actually over the last couple of weeks and then one scheduled um in July, the Ju- July one will be virtual. Um, but so far getting good, good feedback um on that. There are a few different components of it that we're looking at. Um. One is paid parking um in the town centers. And also paid parking at sort of recreational sites, so uh beach, uh beach parking areas and trailheads. Um, and then also looking at um residential permit parking for those residential areas that are adjacent. To the paid parking areas so that we can control uh any sort of spillover of uh parking into the neighborhoods. Um, and then also just point out that uh recently Palisades uh Tahoe actually. Uh, reached out to us. They intend to implement paid parking next season. Um, and so there's a potential for them to be sort of the first out of the gate uh in terms of a partnership with. Um, Palisades to implement some paid parking up here on the north uh North Shore. So, anyway, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Crystal. Mr. Drake.
Um, yeah, kudos to Crystal and the uh Placido County Planning and CEO's Office teams. Um, we're making a lot of progress on. Really the first, I think, real progressive parking management kind of pilot program in Tahoe and we're pretty excited to see it roll out in North Shore. That'll be one of the topics that we'll cover on the walkabout of Kings Beach following the governing board meeting. Um, on August twenty third, um, I'm working with. Uh, Ryan Murray and Jacob Stock at T R P A and they're also coordinating with um the various teams of Placido County. So. The agenda's T V D, but we're gonna really take a hard look at the, both the successes and the challenges of. Kind of, I guess, look at Kings Beach as a microcosm of how we're doing in the basin on the triple bottom line. So I hope, I hope to see many of you there. Um, the time will be probably just shortly after governing board meeting noonish, um, but we'll let everyone know. Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. So A P C members will be invited to that tour?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Mark your calendars. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Simon.
Um, not really a report today. Uh, I'm looking forward to the August meeting and. Kings Beach, the walkabout. I think that will be very helpful. Um, and then. What we're looking at is the amendments are kind of in our area, looking at the. Amendments to the area plan and how that affects some of the proposed development um in, in Klein Village, Crystal Bay. Thanks.
Thank you, Judy. Ms. Chandler.
Um, only one comment uh related to paid parking, also that Heavenly will be instituting paid parking on weekends next year. Uh, so uh, we can compare how Heavenly handles it in comparison to how Palisades handles it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, Mr. Steven, thank you for joining us. Chief Steven.
Yes, I'm just there, trying to start the camera there. Hey there, Chad Steven, Fire Chief for Lake Valley Fire and the representative for the Lake Tahoe Regional Chiefs. Uh, apologize for not being there today. I kind of came down with a cold last night, thought I should stay away. Um. Uh, all we got going really is Cal Fire extended their yard burning. Restrictions through the end of the month. Probably, we could probably anticipate before July fourth, seeing that. Closed down uh generally. The Lake Tahoe Regional Chiefs burn ban goes into place at the same time as that. Um, so we could expect that probably before around July fourth. Um, that's pretty much all I have to report.
Thank you, Chief. And assume, I assume you're replacing Mr. Gavon due to his retirement on our committee. Okay.
Yes.
Excellent. Great to have you. Uh, then just, I see, I think, did I, I think I got everyone. Um, just quickly for me, we did take a long range planning item to our board yesterday and we did talk about two Tahoe items, which traditionally have not been on that report. One is moving forward a commodities policy and the second is looking at an area plan exten- uh expansion in Eldorado County. So we're trying to muster up support and um financing to hopefully complete those. And then lastly, I'm just gonna say that Supervisor Lane is convening a vacation home rental advisory committee that the board did uh. Authorize her to move forward with, that will be convening and meeting probably over the next year, uh, looking at. Potentially substantial changes to the county's V H R ordinance. So, that's coming.
That was the Eldorado County Board of Supes.
Eldorado County Board of Supes, not T R P A Board.
Thank you.
Governing Board, correct. Thank you for that clarification, John. And that concludes A P C member report. So I'm gonna move us on to item seven, public interest comments. Uh, if any member of the public wishes to address the advisory planning commission at this time, please raise your hand. By clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone and you'll be called on and unmuted by a T R P A staff member. Please note, A P C is prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public that are not listed on the agenda. And I'm gonna go over to you, Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one hand raised. Uh, Elise, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Elise, you are still muted and we cannot hear you.
So, so sorry about that. Um, first of all, I just wanted to say I'm thrilled to hear about the mixed use. Great, um, to see it incorporated and encouraged as well as in the green stormwater slide, you uh showed the green roofs, mentioned that. I've designed several of those um and have, I know I met with. Uh, Paul Nielsen, oh gosh, over ten years ago, hoping that you guys could provide some incentives for people to do green roofs. Um, what I didn't see was that um, the uh, you were talking about the. Fine sediment and the concern with that and the stormwater drains, but uh, I didn't see uh, uh, any points about. Native vegetation and the significant reduction uh using fertilizers. That have phosphorus and nitrates, um, especially high level ones. So our slow release, so uh, my understanding from uh. Landscapers is that's extremely important for the health of our lake and uh hoping you can encourage and put that in your slides. Um, the other item is with respect to the aquatic herbicides, it was agreed that. If uh aquatic herbicides were approved, that after three years, it would not be a one-time application. Um, therefore you would be making the same mistake made at Big Bear Lake and Clear Lake. Um, uh, and plus many lakes in Minnesota, we have many articles on that, where weeds just mutate and they get stronger. And it's a lose, lose, lose situation. So, um, also, um. Uh, when you allowed this exemption for the permit to use just in aquatic herbicides. Um, they said that they would protect the community from a toxic algae bloom using the Foslock, but um, in spite of. All the supposed monitoring, um, unfortunately Lars said that he saw the blooming too late. And um, therefore decided it might not be useful and also that he would have to. Monitor the use of the Foslock if he used it. Therefore, the toxic algae bloom was allowed. And um, that does cause B M A A that goes airborne. Um, there's also, I'm not hearing discussion on the. Um, aggressively getting to the source of the problem of filtering the hundred and sixty nine stormwater pipes that drain into the Keys. Banning the fertilizers with phosphorus and nitrates. And you need to regulate that because I even had a discussion with Joan Douglas when she came up to see the students at the high school speak here in Incline. And even she has heard Keys property owners that say they have not even heard about. The first lot fertilizer ban and one gentleman she heard at a party talking about how we found a high. Level fertilizer for his wife for her yard. So that needs to be, I think, incorporated. In these three years, this inc- this need, not just to educate in the Keys, but in the whole basin. That this need to reduce fertilizers for the health of the lake. Um, so thank you for your time and um, I appreciate all you do. Please keep in mind the concern of applying aquatics herbicides. And the weeds mutating, getting stronger like they did in Clear Lake, Big Bear Lake in Minnesota, and also the. Um, concern of the algae blooms and B M A A. Thank you. Which is a neurological toxin, by the way, that causes neurological um degeneration.
Thank you, Elise, for your comments. Could I also ask you to state your full name for the record? Oh, you are muted.
Sorry, it's Elise Fett.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your time and comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised to comment on this item.
All right. Thank you, Catherine. And with that, I'm gonna move us to item eight, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Steve says yes. I'm assuming no one is opposed to that. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And that motion carries and we do stand adjourned at twelve twenty one. Thank you all so much for your time today. Have a good rest of the day.